... which is adopting the agenda or their corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, it moves us to visitor presentation. We had Representative Nash was gonna, is our representative now, was gonna give us some legislative updates, but called late and is not able to make it tonight, so he will not be here. So if he came here to listen to our Representative Nash, he's not gonna be joining us. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak on visitor presentation for anything other than an agenda item tonight? Okay, Kevin, anybody online?
No, no one online.
All right. Uh, we'll move to, uh, item six, approving previous many, meeting minutes from, um, April 3rd, 2023 meeting. Again, if there are no corrections, additions to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, approving, uh, April 3rd council meeting, 2023. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next is item seven, consent. These are items that, um, we, uh, need to approve, but not necessarily have a conversation. But any and all can be pulled off and have a conversation if, uh, anyone deemed so. With that, is there any, uh, comments, concerns, questions on a consent item? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve consent.
Uh, so moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grau to, uh, approve consent. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves to item eight, uh, which is action item, item A, is adopt resolution 2023-36, denying the variance to Bavaria Road setback at 1142 Rosemary Lane.
Mayor, Councilmember, this item, uh, is coming tonight from the Planning Commission. Uh, you will see that i- it was one that the Planning Commission did, uh, approve and, uh, um, is requesting a variance and setback for putting in, uh, underground sports court. I'm gonna turn it over to Nate, are you gonna, or Liz?
Liz will be presenting.
Okay. Turn it over to Liz, uh, who will be presenting this. Uh, you will see that, uh, staff's recommendation still remains to, uh, a recommendation to deny, uh, the variance. But again, the Planning Commission, uh, did, uh, vote to, to approve it there. So Liz will be going through, uh, some of those facts from the, from the review and the Planning Commission, too.
Just a clarified question before we jump in. There's two resolution, is that because we, okay.
Yep, it's just, one if you wanna go in one direction, one if you wanna go in the other.
When I was looking at it, I didn't think we were, I, that's what I assumed, but it, it was, I wanna make sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, we got a variance application in front of you for the property at 1142 Rosemary Lane in regards to deviating from the Bavaria Road setback. This is being proposed by the property owner, Jimmy Sun. So the property in question is highlighted in the above aerial in blue. Uh, this property is located more so on the north side of, uh, the city of Chaska. It's located north of Pioneer Trail, kind of in the, uh, mid-center of, uh, the northern parts of Chaska. Uh, this property is within a detached, single-family development known as Nickel Creek Fourth Edition. Uh, some of the properties within this development have, uh, direct adjacency to Bavaria Road, so they have, uh, rear yard, uh, abutment, uh, to that road. Uh, the property in question, again, is 1142 Rosemary Lane. We'll get into some conditions here. So the property is within a planned residential district, uh, PRD 53 to be exact, for Nickel Creek Fourth Edition. Uh, the setbacks, um, are established within that, uh, planned residential district, one of them being a setback of 125 feet from the center line of Bavaria Road. I also wanna note that there is a 10-foot exception for attached decks. Um, so that's, uh, center line setback would be 115 feet for attached decks. Uh, the plat for Nickel Creek Fourth Edition was done in 2013, um, and subsequently this property was built shortly thereafter. Um, it is a property composed of 0.27 acres, which amounts to 11,823 square feet in size. Uh, it's currently, uh, contained with a single-family home, a garage, a small shed, and a deck. Uh, the way the, the home and deck currently sit today, the deck is currently at the 115-foot center line setback, uh, from Bavaria Road. The rear of the home backs up to Bavaria Road, so that's why this setback is in question this evening. Uh, in terms of classification, the road itself is a major collector road. The 2040 comprehensive plan guides this section of roadway to be upgraded as an arterial roadway as Chaska and the surrounding community continues to grow. Um, arterial roadways have that 125-foot setback from the center line. A couple pictures of the existing property, mainly taken on the rear portion of the property, just to give you a real look, um, as to what exists out there. We have also included a picture from the front, uh, looking, um, to the west there, showing, uh, that outlot of, uh, significant trees in between, uh, this lot in question and their neighboring lot. Uh, but as you can see, uh, they do have an attached deck on the property today and kind of the area, uh, in question this evening where they're proposing a building addition. So the request this evening from the property owner is a variance from section 15.28100A, uh, which is a section that, uh, speaks to setbacks from principal roadways within the city. Minor arterials, uh, which this, uh, section of roadway is listed under, uh, requires 125-foot setback from the center line of that road. And then, again, that exception for attached decks, uh, shall be 10 feet less than the requirement for buildings. So they wish to construct a rear, uh, building addition to their existing home for the purpose of an underground sport court. Uh, what they wish to do is to locate, uh, basically within the, uh, footprint of where the existing attached deck currently sits. What that would amount to is a deviation of 12 feet into the center line setback of Bavaria Road. So, in essence, they're looking for a variance request of 113 feet from the center line of Bavaria Road for that building addition of where they wish to locate. Um, the applicant statement, uh, in regards to the practical difficulty or, uh, the reason of, uh, not being able to meet that 125-foot setback, uh, attributes to a couple things here. Um, they would like an indoor gym space, uh, needed for their family to promote a healthy lifestyle, provide space that would reduce community exposure, um, and support their mental and physical health. Uh, they make the argument that there are similar-sized homes and lots in their neighborhood and throughout the city, uh, that are not as restrictive as theirs in regards to setbacks. Uh, they don't believe there's practical alternatives that exist on the property, um, or adding on to the home. Uh, they opted to follow their existing, uh, deck footprint and locate under the deck to minimize the impact of the building addition. Uh, they also state that the proposed location would not require significant costs. Uh, that would include modification or movement of an exterior wall, which attributes to that significant cost. And building under the deck and in the back of the home, uh, they believe will not adversely impact their neighbors. Uh, this is, uh, an existing survey of the property, where the house sits and where the attached deck, uh, comes to on the property. They also have, uh, their accessory shed, um, kind of tucked in between as well. Again, the, uh, setback for the attached deck today is 113, or I'm sorry, 115 feet from the center line of Bavaria Road. Uh, the proposed addition, again, would generally, oops, would generally follow, uh, that similar footprint as to where, uh, the detail, or the attached deck would come out to today. Um, and then they would kind of add on, um, more to the side, uh, up to the, the side setback line and to the back of their home, uh, for that proposed addition. And all of that would fall, uh, below the attached decks, uh, profile. So essentially, um, the attached deck would sit on top of this proposed addition and the building would be below that. So in terms of what that would look like, uh, from a couple angles of, um, the elevations, uh, from, uh, the north side as well as the west side, um, again, uh, what would be seen, um, is the attached deck would kind of maintain that, that same, uh, height profile that exists today, and then a building addition would come underneath that. But there still would be a building addition, uh, visible on the north and west sides, as you can see here. And this elevation drawing does show, uh, what's being seen above grade and then what's being seen below, sorry, what's being seen below grade, um, under the yellow line here, which indicates that grade line. So with a variance application and a request, uh, in order to grant a variance application, it does need to meet state statute requirements of granting a variance application, which really comes down to the definition of practical difficulty on a property. Uh, so I'm gonna read this definition from state statute, uh, which means, uh, so practical difficulties, uh, means the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning ordinance. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. And the variance, if granted, would, uh, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Economic considerations alone shall not constitute an undue hardship if reasonable use of the property exists under, under the terms of the ordinance. Uh, so again, the above statute and the stated factors, uh, therein must be met in order for a variance to be granted. So the factors and some of the questions that are asked as a part of a variance application are, are listed on this slide here. Uh, the factors, which again, kind of go into, um, the very specifics of the state statute, uh, being that conditions that create a pr- practical difficulty that would prohibit re- reasonable development without a variance, conditions on the property that it create, uh, prac- practical difficulty that are not present on similar-sized lots in the same area and zoning district, and relationships with abutting property that will not be adversely affected by the, by the variance or alter the essential character of the locality. Uh, again, that's just kind of breaking down that state statute that we went over, kind of into those three, uh, basic factors that have to be met. And then the questions that we use kind of as that analysis basis, uh, getting to those factors are all stated underneath that. So, um, that goes into, you know, each question that we ask as a part of the variance application, uh, to see if there's a need, um, or it, it hits that requirement, uh, to grant a variance. Um, so kind of compiling, um, those questions and those factors into what staff's analysis, uh, was of answering those questions and those factors, I've kind of grouped into this slide here in terms of, uh, what our, um, uh, conclusion, uh, came to, uh, with the variance application and, and how it was proposed. One of the, uh, conclusions is there are no apparent unique physical characteristics or conditions that are present on the property that make it difficult to meet the setback. Um, and, and that's a really big piece of a variance application, is showing that your property is unique. It's different from other properties within the vicinity, um, or in, uh, that have, uh, the same, um, regulations applied to them. Is there something unique on that property that sets it apart and, and makes it difficult for them to meet a stated regulation, in this case, uh, the Bavaria Road setback? The Bavaria Road setback alone cannot be constituted, constituted as a practical difficulty. Uh, the setback does equally apply to the other properties surrounding this lot, as well as the other properties north of Pioneer Trail, so it's not a setback that's solely, um, implicated on this lot in particular. Uh, the setback and the way it is set, uh, today has not resulted in unreasonable development within the area, as development has still been able to occur in and around, uh, the setback. Uh, this lot is similar in size, uh, to the other surrounding lots on Rosemary Lane. And again, kind of getting to that first criteria of that there's really not something, uh, unique or there, there isn't a physical characteristic that, uh, really puts this property in a position, um, unlike, um, other properties within the vicinity for meeting the setback. Uh, Bavaria Road is guided to be a minor arterial roadway and requires 125 feet from the center line, uh, from a safety and a separation standpoint. Um, Bavaria Road is not the only, uh, road within the city that has this setback. There are other roads, such as county roads, that do require this, so this isn't a unique situation either. Uh, the variance would alter the essential character of the locality, um, which in this case is the neighborhood. Um, so if the variance were granted, um, it would, uh, set a, a precedence of, uh, being able to encroach into that setback, um, in which case it would promote, uh, an implication on the view shed, uh, along Bavaria Road. But also, uh, that separation piece, um, that we noted in the bullet point before that. Um, and getting to the precedence piece, um, if you do grant a variance, um, uh, usually there needs to be a strong indication of why that variance should be granted from a unique standpoint on the property that would not apply to, uh, other properties in the vicinity. So if you were to grant this variance and that, that isn't in place, it does set a, a precedence, um, uh, for it to continue to occur uh, along that roadway. Um, so, uh, with the variance application, um, in this instance of, uh, staff coming to a recommendation of denial, um, uh, a list of findings, uh, have to be created, uh, to support the denial of that variance, uh, which are stated on this slide here. Uh, we do have a total of four findings, which really, uh, take into account the bullet points, uh, that I went through on that last slide. Um, the first one being practi- practical difficulties. Due to unique characteristics of the property do not exist. The property is similar in size and charac- to the, to the other lots on Rosemary Lane. The Bavaria Road setback is applied on all lots adjacent to the roadway, roadway and not just this lot. The second finding being the Bavaria Road setback regulation alone cannot be considered a practical difficulty to grant a variance. This setback equally applies to other lots on Rosemary Lane, abutting Bavaria Road, and all lots along Bavaria Road, north of Pioneer Trail, and thus is not unique to this property. Uh, furthermore, the setback regulation has not resulted in, in unreasonable use of the property. The variance, if granted, will alter the essential character of the area. A rear building addition encroaching into the minimum building setback would set a negative precedence for other homes along Bavaria Road, uh, in which case granting this variance would alter the view shed along that road. And then lastly, the variance, if granted, is contrary to the intent and purpose of the city's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, uh, section 15.28100A and to PRD 53, which both establish that, uh, 125-foot setback, um, and, uh, based upon its current and future classification, uh, within the city. Uh, the setback is necessary as it seeks to provide adequate separation and safe conditions for near, nearby uses, uh, espec- especially, uh, livable uses such as a building. Um, did wanna note, uh, that, uh, this went to the Planning Commission last Wednesday, April 12th. Um, they did, uh, make a motion at that meeting to recommend approval of the variance, uh, based on the following findings. Uh, one being the request for the variance is reasonable and the variance is the most appropriate measure, uh, to approve the request as there were no other tools, uh, to use that at the time of the decision. The variance request is not changing the general footprint and size of the structure as it presently sits today, is how they viewed it. The lots, and secondly, the lots on Rosemary Lane are situated differently and closer in relation to the Bavaria Road setback compared to other lots along Bavaria Road to justify the approval of the variance request. Um, this vote did pass. Um, there are four ayes and three nays, um, so almost split, uh, but, uh, it resulted in a recommendation of approval from Planning Commission. Um, I think we wanna note just what the findings, um, uh, those were curated at the time of the decision, uh, being made, um, and don't necessarily align with, uh, the state statute requirement for practical difficulty and the, uh, uh, factors within that. Uh, because of that, um, and the way this variance request aligns with that state statute requirement and how to grant a variance, uh, staff recommendation is still, um, in, in the manner of recommending, recommendation of denial. So we are asking coun- city council to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-36, which is denying the variance request to encroach into the Bavaria Road setback 12 feet for the purpose of an indoor sport court, uh, specifically section 15.28100A as well as PRD 53 of the zoning ordinance. And then, uh, based on the stipulations and the findings that are listed within, uh, that resolution. But also wanna note, if, um, uh, you were to, uh, approve, uh, the request this evening, then you would be adopting resolution number 2023-37. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, we do also have the applicant and property owner, uh, within, uh, the room as well, if you have specific, uh, questions for them. Thank you.
All right, questions for Liz?
This may not be a question that you can answer, but if, if it were to become an arterial road, what would the footprint look like as far as? Would expand out?
It's sort of, yes, it would expand out. Um, I think one of the things, uh, uh, Mike and I were just talking about is, you know, the road wouldn't be built into the yard. It would only, what this ends up being is it ends up being an issue with how close structures are to the actual roadway itself. So let's say a car drives off the road, um, there's, there's a, there's standard setbacks that you set based on the type of road, the type of speeds, uh, that you tend to see on that road, uh, as far as the setback, so that if you did have things like a car going off the road or things like that, that there's enough of a setback that you wouldn't, uh, create issues with structures that are there.
And their road, and their property that abuts the road is higher elevation than the road itself, so there's almost like a retaining wall. So, does that then impact safety? Like, are we still concerned about?
It's hard, it's hard to say unless you sort of know what the design of that road is in the future. To me, what this is a bigger issue of is precedent for how we deal with other properties.
Right.
And, um, you know, 'cause, I mean, honestly, I think when, when staff goes into these types, these, these are always difficult ones, 'cause when staff goes into these, our natural desire is to want to try to get to yes. Uh, because, you know, adding a sport court to your house, that's a great, that's a nice addition to the house. It's, it really gets down to is, um, is this lot unique from other lots that are, are there? And to me, it sort of gets into more of the question of, if you were gonna approve it here, then why wouldn't you approve it other places? And, you know, are you okay then with being able to carry that, you know, whatever that new setback is throughout the entire area, which is inconsistent with what our comp plan says the setback should be, if that were to turn into an arterial, arterial road someday, which is what our comp plan says, based on increasing population? So to me, it, it is more of a, if you're willing to do it here, why not somewhere else? 'Cause we just couldn't come to the conclusion that there was something unique about this lot that didn't exist with other lots that are there.
And that, that precedent piece that Matt's talking about is exactly the reason why the analysis for practical difficulty that Liz walked you through is consistently applied in this situation, right? Because we're trying to be consistent with an evaluation of a request that sometimes, um, you know, you, you may feel, I don't know if emotional attachment is the right word, um, but, you know, a situation like this where it's like, yeah, that, you know, that's a nice addition, um, but we have to, we have to try and meet that test for practical difficulty. Um, and it applies standard to test to that, um, so that we can be consistent. And it can't be based on, well, do you like the sport court or do you not like the other thing that's being proposed? Um, that, that's where it gets tricky.
Yeah, this is reminiscent of one we had in 2021, I believe, where it really came down to the precedent we were setting. And, um, I think that's the hard thing, 'cause every, like, emotionally, yeah. And a sport court would be super nice. And, um, in that case, before, it was same thing. It was due to COVID, wanting to have more space and, and everything like that, and it, it was hard. But ultimately, we've come across times where precedent was set for us that made it very difficult in, to do things in the future. Um, and just, it's a matter of, I think, making sure that we're consistent. So, and that's kind of how I viewed it. And even though, just like you said, it was, you know, you wanna say yes, how do we get to a yes? But, um, yeah, that, definitely tough.
So with regards to precedent, if, if the variance were granted, would that also, so there's like seven other houses on the same block, they're pretty much the same lot size layout, right? They would effectively all be eligible for that same thing, you know?
I think it would be very difficult to tell them no if you told one yes.
Right. And then, but likewise, even in a different neighborhood, different arterial road, if someone said, you know what, I have a, a lot that's flat, I've got a house, I wanna build something, doesn't matter what it is, doesn't matter sport court, another bedroom, whatever, right? And says, I just want a variance from that, that road, you know, the road center line, which is 125 feet, then we, it sounds like it would also apply there too, perhaps, because the same, the same issue.
Yep, I mean, it's, it would really apply, I mean,
Anywhere.
It actually could apply to any setback, because it, it would make the argument of saying, you know, uh, you know, if you are okay with letting people go into a setback for, for roadway, um, for what a road could be in the future, it probably becomes less of an issue for roads that are already there.
Right.
Because it probably just doesn't feel right to, to, to do that. I, I get it, and something like this, if the road is the size it is, and you see this big area back there, it's just like, well, let's use it. Um, but it's, it's really looking at what those future conditions could be, and how do we make sure that we're consistent on that?
So, kind of following that thread, now there's a liability thread, right? So, if, if for some reason, let's say that there is road construction to be done, right? And so it's, I had to reclaim property, and now there's some infringement upon the, the structure because it's inside of that, inside of that right-of-way. Says, yep, we're gonna need that right-of-way for something else, who's liable for that cost?
Yeah, Mike reminded me, this is a little different here, because it's not like they're building into the right-of-way, they're building into the setback.
They're building to the setback, okay.
Yeah. And so, um, what the, and that's why he was sort of just reminding me that this becomes more of, there's setbacks for a reason. There's setbacks for a reason for, uh, you know, safety issues. And I, I suppose a question could be asked is, okay, if we allow a, uh, a structure to be built into a setback that's set for a certain road and a car did go into, you know, do we put ourselves as a city any liability for granting a, a structure to go into a setback?
Yeah, I don't think so in this case. But, you know, it was a, that's why the setbacks are there, though, in this circumstance, I believe, is for that safety factor. But the variance analysis is, you know, more or less related to whether or not the variance request is, um, reasonable because the property has a unique circumstance. So the safety, you know, thing is something that we kind of gravitate to when we're looking at it. But like Liz said, the real question is, you know, why is this property special in a way that it should get a variance? And, you know, what staff has found is, it's not, it's just like all the other houses.
And so, and it appears from what I'm seeing is that basically this structure, the actual physical structure itself is built right up to that, um, right up to that setback, effectively.
The deck is.
Yeah, the deck is, right.
Yep.
And then likewise, their neighbors are also the same, it's kind of right up to that.
Yeah, there's, there's degrees of difference, right? But.
Yeah, 'cause one of the, one of the things is the road actually curves as you get south of here. And so some of the reasons that some of the area, backyards have larger areas is because the road curves away from the houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of those homes are probably within a five, you know, about five feet from that setback, if not all the way up to it. And that's not unique either in the city of Chaska, where you think about Big Woods Boulevard, I think is another, I'm sorry, Savannah Way is another really good example. It's not arterial, it's a collector. But, you know, there are a lot of homes where they're, the back of those homes are built right to that setback. And that has to do with, when we're going through, you know, the plating process, the builders are looking to, you know, maximize the footprints of the, the lots that they can get, and then within that lot, maximize the footprint of the house that you can get on the lot is often the goal of the person who's ultimately, you know, purchasing that lot and going through that build process. But it's not necessarily the unique circumstance that we don't see elsewhere. Thank you.
There's that fence line that runs all the way back there, it must be right, is that at the property lines then, or is that just at?
So, yeah, so a fence can be within that setback, just like we have the allowance for the deck. And the difference there is it's not a permanent structure, right? Whereas here, you're talking about getting a foundation in.
But the fence couldn't go outside of the property line.
Correct.
But that's your property line where the fence is then?
Correct. Most likely, within a few feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're, it's because they all line up, so I'm assuming they just kind of worked off of that.
Anyone else?
Is it, is it Mr. Sue?
Son.
Or son, son, in front of me right now. Would you like to come on, come up and address the council?
Sure. Thank you all for
Just officially name and address, no, that's fine.
Jimmy Sun, 1142 Rosemary Chaska. Once again, thanks this evening for hearing my application. Obviously, it is a long shot, I already knew that coming into this, but I wanted to follow the processes, because it's kind of been my, or our family's kind of, kind of a, a dream to kind of do something like this and stay in the community, so we thought we'd go through the whole process. We hired a contractor to design it as to kind of minimize all of the other things. Obviously, the hardest one is to prove that we're unique. There are some features where we felt like it would be a, a little bit easier to swallow, mainly because it's about from the street, it's about 20 feet up to where the deck is. And then from the street, you can't really, you only see the, you only see people standing on the deck, you don't see it. So we felt like we built it in a certain way to be, not be obnoxious to the neighborhood was like the most important thing. Try to minimize the size as to fit the, fit the footprint of the deck, being that, you know, we were allowed to build the deck, so we wanted to put it in a place where things were to happen. It kind of was, there was probably rules for the deck to be like that because it was safe enough. I think there was also some initial findings of like other alternatives, we couldn't find any, I think there was initial one for the initial finding to put like a, an outdoor sport court in the backyard. It's Minnesota, it's, weather's terrible, so we wanted something for the family. So, again, a long shot, a dream of our family, we love the community, wanted to do this for the kids in the neighborhood too. We have the means and resources to do this. The project itself would be more expensive to build it the way that we did, but again, that was to minimize the effect on the neighborhood. So a lot of, majority of the neighborhood who were really close tight knit, support it, and we're hoping that we could work through some of these areas where a lot of folks here want to set it as black and white. I just wanted to call out some gray areas, if there were any. Obviously, legal probably does not want to hear gray areas, so keep it black and white. And so, yeah, the whole concept of precedence, I get that, I respect that, but also I hope that the merits of each person's application brings forth to this council, so that they can kind of speak to their own case. I can't speak for the neighbors down the road from us, I don't know what they're planning to do or what they do, but I hope you guys give them, if this was the past, you give, you make them go through the same exact thing, and hopefully their arguments is just as strong, or if not, but that's where I come as an individual for my own application. Thank you. Any questions?
Is there any way that it could be built where you have that storage shed?
Yes, but it's a 10 by 16, we, we did all the math, and that becomes kind of a bedroom, so not much you can do in that space. I think about, you think about a basketball court, it's probably half the size of a, like of a half where the free throw line is, so it's fairly small. So we wanted to make it so it's usable to play like a little pickup game with three and three with the kids, or like a little tiny pickleball court or something like that. So we tried as much as possible. Other options are knocking out foundation walls and taking up space in our basement, probably would double the project amount and just be really hard for us to kind of pull that through. But we considered a bunch of stuff. I think you could build on the other side, again, size is small, but also that becomes very much a nice, or on the other side of the neighborhood. We're, we're building into a berm, so it kind of is just tucked underneath there. Things about the visual looks and aspects of it, like we could probably put screens on to make that space usable, but it'd be the same concept. So that's why we chose to be as minimally invasive to the neighborhood as much as possible.
I mean, I, I, I agree, I think your plan under the deck, you know, it's, it's probably most people wouldn't even notice it. I, I get that and understand, I understand that, but that precedent is such a big thing in a city. It's just, it, it's, it's not only your neighbors that we have to worry about, it's all across the city. And that's, that's where it becomes very challenging. And, and that's the hard part. Like I said, I, this one's tugged at me more than some of the other decisions we make, because it all makes sense. It makes perfect sense, except for the setback. And that's, that's such, that's such a big thing for us that we have to deal with. And, and it's, it might not be us, but it might be that the council's down the road. And, and that's the one thing we try not to do, is strap the council down the road with a decision that we made, because in our heart, it was the right thing, but in reality, it's probably the wrong thing because of that setback. That, that precedent, I, I know, I know it doesn't make sense to you, but sitting on this side, a precedent is huge. It just, there, there'll probably be people coming to us right away because we allow a setback onto an arterial road, just looking for something, a project similar to yours. And then, and then, once those gates are open, it's pretty hard to close them, and that's where the challenge becomes. And, and really, as, as Liz went through the things, none of the hardships really fell into that. I mean, most times there's something, you know, where we grant, where we're granting a variance is where something's not usable, or, or really prevents them from totally utilizing their lot. None of that really falls into play here. I, but I get where that'd be a cool setup, and I, and I've seen them. I've, I've went into some of those houses with the sports courts, and, and they're pretty, pretty nice deal, especially for the winter and the kids and all that. But I just, I am, I, it's the struggle of that precedent that we set when we go that far. I mean, if we were talking a foot, you could probably, but, you know, we're talking 12 feet, that's a lot. That's, that's a lot to, then why isn't 15 feet okay? And then why isn't 20 okay? It, it, because I'm with you, I don't even know, I mean, and, and then the concern is, is if you sell it and move, the, there's a variance, is that listed on a legal thing?
Yeah, variance stays with the property.
Okay. Because that's what I say, then the next person comes in and is upset because, you know, there's something with the, you know, you're within that setback.
Neighbor next door. And that's, I think the neighbor, the person who buys the house probably loves that, the neighbor next door who didn't realize that that was an exception. I mean, those are the, like, that would be a, someone that would ask you, right? Sorry, I cut you off.
No, you're, no, you're fine. I, but I, I just, I, I'm looking at your photo, and I was out there today, and I'm just looking, just, I, I did, I can't tell measurements here, so.
Yeah, I, I'll comment, because I appreciate you coming forth, and, you know, you've done, you're prepared, which is good. You know, the one comment in your, in your statement that, that sticks to me, it talks to me, is about that precedent, and then kind of taking the merits of the application. And I actually kind of look at that and say, that's where cities get themselves in trouble, is looking at the merit of the applicant, because that introduces a whole lot of, of problem. Because now I have to defend why, or the city has to defend why your merit was better than the other merit, right? And so the easiest, what I've learned, and I'm no expert by any means, that's why we have legal counsel up here a lot of times, is following the rules that are established and consistent and apply it. I echo, I mean, I saw this when I was preparing, and I'm just like, oh, like this is not the one, right? Like this, these are hard, because I want a sport court, like I, I mean, that, that sounds awesome, I have a 10-year-old and 8-year-old, they'd love it. But it is, and then I'd have to check my variance, or my, my setbacks, but these are the hard ones, because that's where it gets hard, because it really can't go into the merits of the applicant, because it, it becomes gray, to use the word you described, right? Where, and then you really, it becomes hard to defend. How do you say no to that neighbor two down that wants to do, that didn't take in considerations of what their neighbors felt, and what the structure looks like, everything like that? And it's just, everyone looks at it and go, that's a terrible looking project. How can we say no, and we, you know, because this project looked better? Like, that's, that's, to me, when you said that, it's like, oh, I know, I, I hear you, I'm with you. But that's where cities get themselves in trouble, is when they don't look at the facts of the, of what's established by legal guidance and law, and act out of the merits of the applicant type thing. So, ah, yeah, it's not a, it's not a, it's a decision that I like to make, because, especially, like I said, you, you've done your work, you've been very considerate of the neighborhood, you, you know, it makes, it makes sense as a person. But, yeah, that's kind of where my head's at, is I really struggle with that, of, of how is your property different than other properties, and what does that create? And how do we say no or yes in the future?
You know, I'm, I'm in a similar thought process here, but you know, I mean, you know, I think that you've done a great job in like, thinking through this, being conscious of your neighbors, getting input from them, to offer something back to your community. Love the fact that you want to reinvest into your home, I mean, that's a huge thing, it's a testament about your commitment to the community. And I, and I really, really, really want to say yes to anybody who says, I'm going to reinvest like a significant chunk of money to make my home better, to make my neighborhood better, to, you know, create opportunities for my kids, for, you know, for the neighbor's kids, for all these things, right? And I think that what you did was very thoughtful, you tried to do all the right things. The biggest challenge I run across, and, you know, in addition to being here, or prior to coming to council, I actually was on the Board of Adjustment for Carver County, and so we, all we did was variances, right? And the toughest part about variances is that it's not just this variance and precedent, but, or even the neighbors down the road and variance and precedent, but it's the variance and precedent that we don't know was coming, because of something on a different part of town, a completely different situation, that gets used as an argument against why we have to have a variance, but it's totally the wrong thing in that situation. And that's the danger. It's the, the fact we're planning a landmine for a future council, or this council at another date, that we don't know what it is, couldn't predict and couldn't tell you what it is. And, you know, and that could introduce other liability, as for the community, which unfortunately comes back to all of us as taxpayers too. And I'm not willing to put our community out there in terms of that future liability because of that. I, you know, like, I, like I said, I really, really wish I could say yes to this, but that precedent is too overwhelming to, to ignore. But I, I appreciate all the, the thought there, and I hope you do find some way to create some environment for your, for, for your family, because I think it's a great idea, and I love your passion about this.
So I had the pleasure of meeting you and your family this weekend, and I almost regret it because you guys are so wonderful, right? Makes it really hard to, to sit here in the meeting and, and agree with my, my fellow council. And my heart, my heart really wants to say yes to this, because I think, as stated by some of the other council members, you put all the time, energy, effort into planning something that is like, you know, fits well on your property, is going to be great for your neighborhood, you took your neighbors into consideration. And it seems like a, like, it seems in a way like a no-brainer, right? Because the way your deck is constructed, and where it would sit in proximity, and like you had talked about, you know, sometimes it boggles my mind that like they could put an outdoor, or a, you know, basketball at, sports thing at the end of the property, from my, from the discussion at the Planning Commission. I don't know if that is something they could actually do or not, but it just seems weird, you know, that they could put something farther down their property, but not like a, like a walled structure, something outdoors. So, you know, trying to wrap my head around all of that, but like we had kind of had that discussion, you know, yesterday, it was, it is the precedence piece of it. And it is the fact that, you know, when you sit up here, I'd like to think that, you know, we look at every individual, every individual's situation, and, and really take the time to get to know you and why it's important, but at the same time, have to weigh it out against the idea of the standard that you are setting for everybody else in the community. And, you know, it's like with anything that we have as standards, they're there to, you know, for various reasons, safety, aesthetic look, you know, being good neighbors to one another. And if we start allowing kind of chipping away at that, then it, it does become really hard, and, and it becomes hard to justify why one, one case is this way and why the other one's that way. And I, I really don't want to do anything that's going to come back to, you know, haunt a, a future council by another completely different situation, in, in a completely different set of circumstances, but it's used as a, you know, the basis for why it should happen. And so my heart really wants to say yes to this. It really, really does, and it's very painful, but I, I think, you know, it kind of has been explained, it's just the piece of just knowing that we have to have that set of standards that's been established, and it's there for a reason. So, those are my thoughts.
All right. I, I do want to mention, I did get another letter of recommendation for you from Craig Bowman.
Oh, the baseball coach.
So I, I just wanted to tell you that I got that. I, I didn't get it into the council records, but I wanted to let you know that he was with you as well, so.
Outside a neighbor who wanted to speak to, if he was willing to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll allow one neighbor to come on up if, if you like. Who do we get, the big guy?
Hi.
Hi.
Chris Sarabsky, 1177 Rosemary Lane. Yeah, I really don't want to speak much more, I don't think I can convince anybody otherwise. I did have some questions, though, as I was just curious, and here in support of Mr. Jimmy, not the Rolling Stones' Mr. Jimmy, but that's up the street.
I picked that up right away when you
Yeah, although there's irony, you can't always get what you want.
Yeah.
So, uh, why is the, why is the setback allowance different from attached deck as opposed to a structure with a foundation? Liz, do you know?
Yeah, I think the way it's been looked at is an attached deck is not considered as substantial as a building. So there is an exception for that, and due to the fact that they do come off the rear portion of the property, there's a 10-foot allowance to do such.
No, I under, yeah, I see, but as it, as it, as it relates to safety, how does it differ? Because that's, that's what the setback is for, right? It's for safety, for a future four lane road.
Yeah, I think cities have sort of looked at it from the standpoint of if a, I mean, let's say for instance, a car went off the road and hit a deck, that, you know, repairing a deck is significantly less of a financial issue than like if you took down a wall. I, I think that's probably traditionally why they, why they've looked at it. Not all cities do allow decks into the, into setbacks, sometimes where the setbacks are, where they're at. That's just not a, we've always allowed decks to go on, so that's been a little bit different in Chaska.
Yeah.
But I think that's sort of the historic reason why.
Yeah, no, I, I'm grateful that you guys, that you guys heard Jimmy's request, and I'm grateful for all you guys do. The older I get, the more I appreciate everything that you guys do and volunteer for, and it means a lot. I could argue it both ways, honestly, but this is Jimmy's pursuit of happiness, and you look at the rules, and it seems arbitrary to just a citizen like me, 125 feet, 115 feet. He's uphill, over a retaining wall, he's building a bunker, for goodness sakes. But I understand, precedence is a big thing, and I respect your guys' decision, so thanks for hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it, like I said, this, this is a tough one. Many of them that we have is, you know, but this one, you're right, all of it makes sense to says, yeah, except if we could get around that, that setback somehow, and that's the hard part. And you kind of knew coming in, as Chris says, Mr. Jimmy, you knew coming in, this was going to be a challenge, and, and And, and it, it, it's, you've created a challenge because you've heard us. Most of us up here are already saying, you know, our heart says, why not? But, and, and as Councilmember Ross said, these things are put in place so that we don't get in trouble. And we start playing with these setbacks and variances for this and that, it just, all we'll be working on is variances and not getting important things that we really need to do. I, I know this is very important to you and your family, but this could create a whole different world for us here. And, and that's why I, as, as, as much as everyone said here, I want to support it, I can't because of that. And, and I don't know what else to say. I don't know what else to say. So, with that, if someone else wants to speak, otherwise I'd be looking what your thoughts are. We have two options. One is, one is a resolution 2023-36, which would deny the variance, or 2023-38, or 2023-37 approving the variance.
I'll make a motion as, as much as I would rather not to 2023-36 denying the variance.
I'll second.
All right, so a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Hatfield, which is 2023-36, which would be denying the variance for the setback on Rosemary Lane. Discussion, final comments. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks so much.
And being so kind.
Thank you for, thank you for all of your work on that.
All right. We move to.
That's sort of a downer.
Yeah, it is.
For downer.
Can we just go home? All right, next is 8B approving resolution 2023-38 and 2023-39 in ordinance number 1033, approving preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plot zoning ordinance for Chaski Yards.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is another item coming from the Planning Commission with a recommendation of approval. This is the, this is the S and Ernst lot. So this is where, over on Walnut Street, where we moved the Ernst home. We've been working with the Carver County CDA to create this into a project that would reuse the Ernst house, so renovate it, reuse it. And then in addition to that, put three additional units on, within those two lots that would be used as communal entrance lot. So adding to our affordable, permanently affordable stock of, of homes within the community. So obviously, this is one that you guys have heard about for a long time. It's been out there for a while, and so we're excited to see the CDA come back with preliminary site and building plans now, and I'll turn it over to Liz to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We have a preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat, zoning ordinance amendment and variance requests for the project known as Chaski Yards, which includes the S lot and the Ernst home being proposed by Carver County CDA. The site in question is highlighted above in the aerial exhibit. It actually includes three separate lots as a part of the overall kind of site area, but really the highlighter focus is primarily on the Ernst home lot and the vacant S lot to the north of that. This is a property that's located in downtown Chaska on what we call Block 37 of the downtown Chaska area. There's street frontage on Walnut Street, the block is adjacent to Third Street and Second Street East, and there is a mid-block alleyway that dissects the middle of this block. And the lot to the south of the overall site is a city-owned parking lot that went in several years ago. I just want to note the three-step process. We are at the second step in our three-step typical process for development applications, which is the preliminary round. Usually at this round, you see a plat, you see a site plan, sometimes you see a zoning ordinance amendment or rezoning. In this case, it would be an amendment. So you'll see this one other time if it makes it through this evening. Both the properties of 211 Walnut was, which is the lot that contains the Ernst house, and then the former S home site had historical designation on the lots. The Ernst home still does as it was locally designated as a part of the, the Chaska plan, but now has contributing status being in the Walnut Street Historic District. So there is historic background there that's important to take note of as this development process continues through. Just a little refresher on some background of the site. The Ernst home was relocated to the site in 2014. That was tied in with a redevelopment project of Fireman's Park to get that project up and going. The Ernst home was formerly in, in the Fireman's Park area, so as a, an objective of getting that redevelopment project through the process and successful, one of the pieces of that was relocating the historic Ernst home to where it sits today. The S lot housed the former Joseph S. House, and in late of 2014, a fire caused significant damage to it, and it was subsequently torn down in 2017. There have been other plans that have gone through the process for the Ernst home and the S lot dating back to 2018, when Tyson Tally had a former project proposed on the site that did not, however, end up moving forward. It is worth noting that they did get rezoning approval during that time, so the site in question this evening is currently zoned PRD 74, a planned residential district. So the district that's being amended this evening to align with the project that's proposed this evening. So the project proposed by Carver County CDA dates back to January of 2022. That's when the concept plan came through for the four-unit project. Then in February of this year, they did come back with their preliminary plan. They only made it to Planning Commission to review that preliminary plan, and after that point, they did opt to withdraw their application. At that time, they wanted to work on the lot layout as well as figure out a solution to eliminate the need for an HOA, because it was their desire to, excuse me, to not have an HOA on the site as they didn't have the resources to be able to sustain an HOA. So hence why it was withdrawn, and they were able to work on the lot layout more and eliminate some of the, the common areas that were previously proposed on the site, which would warrant the need for an HOA. So what they're coming back with this evening with kind of this revised preliminary plan is a plan that eliminates the need for an HOA on the site. So just want to note a couple changes, even though you didn't end up seeing the previous preliminary plan, we just want to note some of the, the changes that have occurred since their withdrawal, withdrawal and subsequent resubmital of their preliminary plan. So they did change the lot layout and configuration proposed there as, these will be owner-occupied units. They wanted to create lots for each of the units to have ownership over the, the housing unit, a garage stall, a surface stall, and have private yard space. So with this new preliminary plan in place, they do have a plat that shows one lot for each housing unit and their ancillary uses as well. And then one lot is also proposed for the city-owned parking lot south of these sites in question. So a total of five lots are oriented on the preliminary plat. Like I stated before, their previous plan had common areas that were going to be shared and maintained by each of the, or by the HOA within the project plan. However, due to the CDA's desire to eliminate that HOA and maintaining an HOA, they have eliminated the common areas on the project site. So those common areas were in the form of courtyard, shared garden space areas, and some private yard, or sorry, shared yard space for like yard games and other activities. So these areas have been basically transformed and absorbed into each of the, the separate lots for their own private yard space. The fencing, they've been able to reorient the fencing on the north side so that it's, it follows the property line up to the north side of the property. This was a change done in response to a comment that was received during Planning Commission to optimize the, the yard space as much as possible. Landscaping, they've also included additional screening on the north sides of units one and two in response to another comment received from Planning Commission. Our only added notion on this is to add that same screening to unit three on the north side of their property in between their yard and Von Hansen's loading area.
So you're saying there's a fence in there?
On the north side?
The north side.
Yes. Yep. And I can show that on a, on a site plan coming up here.
What I'm looking at just shows shrubbery.
Might be too deep in. I'll, I'll, I'll make sure to call that out when we get to a site plan.
I mean, I don't know, unless I'm not looking.
Another change was the detached garage. They included a little bit more space on the garage so that they could have some indoor or interior storage to the building. And then lastly, they did reorient where their attached decks and side entrances were going to be located. Units two and three previously had those pieces on kind of what you would call the, the backside of the building, and now have been oriented to the side of their buildings, which actually allows for more efficient use of their yard space and efficient access into the yard space. In terms of existing conditions out here, and again, we're, we're talking about three lots here as they exist today, and then how it's transformed into the overall site plan. All three lots are roughly 0.2 acres in size, so the overall site area is 0.6 acres. The S lot is currently vacant, the Ernst house has the Ernst home on it, and that's been that way since 2014. And then the city-owned parking lot to the south there. All of these lots have access to the mid-block alleyway, which we also call the Paseo as a part of kind of the downtown highway improvement plan. The lots are currently zoned PRD 74, which was put in place with the previous Tyson Tally project. So again, this zoning district will be amended as a part of this request this evening to align with the project proposed from Carver County CDA. And then lastly, as we've mentioned before, the lots are located within the National Historic Walnut Street District. So tonight's request is a preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for five lots, and the purpose to redevelop the S lot and rehabilitate the Ernst home, a zoning ordinance amendment to PRD 74. And what that amendment would reflect is updates to the PRD district to include the project name, the right legal descriptions, the approving graphic exhibits that reflect this plan, include updated setbacks for the north-south and interior property lines, and then include the building separation requirement. Also included with this request is a variance request from section 1516020F1, which pertains to the general PRD development standards related to building setbacks and building separation. And I'll get into that in a later slide as to what that really entails. And then just to recap, what this project includes is four owner-occupied units, one unit will locate in the Ernst home, and then three new units would be constructed on the site with their own private yards. A detached garage and surface parking will also be constructed, and then the units will be targeted to be affordable towards households at 80% AMI or area median income. So getting into the general PRD development standards, and you may remember these from some of the apartment projects that we had in months past, but the PRD general development standards set some criteria for building setbacks, lot coverage, floor-to-area ratio, common open space. But since this is a detached, single-family, the, the criteria that applies to this type project is building setbacks, lot coverage, floor-to-area ratio. So as the project meets or does not meet those for building setbacks, which also includes building separation, there is a minimum requirement of 30 feet for the perimeter setback of the PRD district that it's locating in, or the height of the building, whichever is greater, but in this case, it would be 30 feet would apply to the perimeter of the PRD district. And then at a minimum, a minimum building spacing of 25 feet. So what's being proposed, the property at its most minimal perimeter setback is seven feet, eight inches, and then the minimum spacing between proposed buildings is eight feet. So this is why there is a variance request attached with this project, is to ask for a variance from this section of the code from PRD Development Standards 1516020F1. In terms of lot coverage and floor-to-area ratio, they meet those requirements. Just a couple images of the current state of the Ernst home. As you can see, it's in desperate need of some TLC, so this project would certainly help in that regard. This is the site plan on this slide here. So four total units, four total housing units are proposed. One unit again would be the Ernst home, another unit would be side-by-side with, with the Ernst home, and then two additional units will be oriented towards the, the middle portion of the site and the rear. And then the detached garage would be located on the southwest portion of the site. This does show the location of the fencing here. It does go up to that north property line there, and I realize it doesn't show as clearly on here, but it will show on other subsequent plans, I believe. With all the other layers kind of happening on here, it's probably not as easy to see. But effectively, kind of this dotted line lays out where the proposed fencing would go and where these private yard spaces or fenced-in yard spaces would go for each of the units, which would effectively go up to the north property line and follow that out towards most of the, the property lines for each unit there. The Ernst home would also have their own fenced-in private yard as well, towards the rear of the home.
Liz, maybe this is the right diagram to look at. Can you show on here the setback situation with the variances? Because it's a, it's from road, and it's also from between buildings, if I'm reading that correctly.
Correct. And I might have a better graphic to show that, just colorizing that out, because sometimes it's hard to follow my cursor.
Because basically, what it really shows is that if you use those setbacks, those lots would be unbuildable.
Right.
That's coming up.
It's coming up.
Yep, I'll, I'll show that.
Stop asking questions.
Relatively soon here. Um, let's see here, what else? So. Let's see here, what else? So some of the elements that were kind of in the previous preliminary plan, like shared walkways, still exist in this plan. So there will be a central walkway that provides access out to Walnut Street and the sidewalk along Walnut Street, and then direct access into the mid-block alleyway or the Paseo planned in the future here, as well as separate individual walkways that would provide access to each of the units, as well as the detached garage. All of them would have direct access to that building.
Is those, is there gates then where they go through there, or are there no fencing there where the main walkway is?
There will, at this time, they're not showing any fencing there. The property will get vehicle access from the alleyway. So even with some of the changes that will happen to the Paseo, there still will be vehicle access to a portion of the alleyway. So this property will still have access to that alleyway and be able to have access to the surface parking stall as well as the detached garage stall. So each unit will have access to two parking stalls for the site, and that would meet city's parking code. Because there are plans for upgrades and improvements to the alleyway to basically meet the, this objective of what we're considering the Paseo here, there was always an emphasis and importance on how to treat this edge, which they plan to do so in the form of landscaping on the west side here to make it a nice edge, as well as designing the buildings as well to be, have 360-degree architecture so that there's really not a blank wall that's being looked at from the Paseo side. Here's a colorized version of the site plan if we need to refer back, but this will, will give kind of more of a simplified approach, if you will, including the landscaping that they're planning on the site here. But you can also see some of the delineations of the fencing there, again, which would go up to the property line there.
I'm nervous that you will answer this in the future. Central Commons there, so who maintains that if there's no association?
So this, and this might kind of be a misleading verbiage being used here, but really, the property lines for each of the units would have private ownership over this kind of private area. So each property will have kind of an emphasized front yard, if you will, into that central area. So each lot will have maintenance responsibilities over what they cover.
I think that layer, or that label is a relic of the previous.
I was gonna say the same thing. I think that Central Commons should.
Because it was really sort of designed now where it'd be individual lots that maintain their individual yards.
It'd be better labeled as central privately-owned yard.
So you might have said this already, is it still a land trust though? So it's still a land trust?
Yes.
Obviously, still like any other, that their owner occupied, and then they'd take care of maintenance and things?
Correct. Each of the units will still have responsibility of snow clearing and maintenance of the sidewalk that's in there, within their property lines. So they'll have a pretty detailed document going over what that agreement really covers and how it covers those elements within the site plan. Here is the lot layout.
Liz, I'm gonna hold you up right there. Just, as long as we're talking about that, you know, we're talking about four individual units, but you have one building as a garage. So that same thing's gonna take effect. They each have ownership of the garage.
Correct.
Even though it's a single unit.
Correct.
So, so even though it's not an HOA, they kind of, they gotta work together.
They do.
Right.
Yep.
And so there will be a shared, we'll see what the attorneys want to call it, but a shared maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
That was something that caught my eye. How do they not have a, that if you have a common garage?
Yep. And it's no different than like an attached townhome building, you know, that you have shared walls and yet you still have your own ownership and, and maintenance responsibilities within a sole building or structure. This visual shows the configuration of the lots proposed out there. So again, with these being owner-occupied units, each of the, the units will be within their own lot, which would also include the yard space that they'll have use over. In addition to that, each of them, again, will have ownership to a garage stall as well as a surface stall where parking is achieved. And then lastly, there is one lot created for the city-owned parking lot to the south there. One of the things that will be corrected as a part of this overall plan is where the south property line of the Ernst home lot currently sits. It actually, this dash line here emphasizes where the property line sits today, so it encroaches into the city-owned parking lot. So as a part of this plat request and final plat, this lot line will be pulled back to where it needs to be naturally, where it needs to be, which would be behind the retaining wall that currently sits out there today. Just a couple exhibits showing some turning movements for the site for both, you know, private vehicle users as well as emergency vehicles, just to show that turning movements can be achieved back here with the layout of the property.
Quick question. For the vehicles that were used as the, as for the analysis, what's the length of the vehicles that were used?
Do you happen to know that number?
We try to use like a larger-length suburban-type vehicle, just to make sure, both for spacing inside the garage, but also for turning radiuses, to make sure we can accommodate bigger vehicles, minivans.
Right. Because those are super common, so yeah. Okay, great.
Yeah, I believe there's, there's 25 feet of distance between the garage wall to the property line. So if you think about a normal parking stall space, which is typically 22 feet, 25 feet will, will be more than sufficient for some larger-sized vehicles back there, if they have larger-sized vehicles. The landscape plan, they do meet the city's landscaping requirements on the site with shrubbery and under-story trees and over-story trees, as well as the additional screening done on the north side here. So again, that comment of kind of continuing that same screening method on the north side of unit three is one of the comments to address at final. Couple elevation drawings of the Ernst home. This also has gone through the HPC process in terms of what they're doing with the Ernst home. I think the biggest change here is they are proposing a rear addition on the backside, which is a one-story shed addition, is what we call it, to provide a little bit more usable space on this home. There is indication, and you can see it on images today, that there appear to be an addition on the backside of the home. So they are replicating what that could have been, and that has been approved by the HPC. And the floor plans, and then the proposed elevations for the new units, as well as the detached garage. These units, the main material would be LP smart side siding or hardy board, and have elements of some trim board to kind of break up the vertical massing of the units, includes some front porch space on the unit facing out towards Walnut Street, which is a nod to some of the elements you see on the Ernst home. So really, these elements were kind of taking into account the context of the historic district, as well as locating next to the historic Ernst home to provide some, a level of congruency there, just in massing, but also showing difference in terms of material and the newness of what these units are. So providing the differentiation between the, the new and the old. And then the floor plans, if we need to refer back at all to those for the new, new units. And then the fencing proposed, they are proposing a four-foot decorative fence to be that delineating fence area for the yard spaces of the units. Then a couple renderings to show multiple views into the site.
Is that white structure, that's the addition you're talking behind?
Yep. Yep. That's the new shed rear addition on the Ernst home. Couple views from more of the pedestrian level and interior of the space where, oops, that central area is and how each of the units connect into the central walkway. Couple more from the interior and then from, looking south, or I'm sorry, looking north from the city-owned parking lot to the south there. And then a couple views from the Paseo or the mid-block alleyway.
Are those transformers right on the alleyway?
Yep, those are existing.
They're currently.
Yep. Getting into the variance request, so again, this is a variance from section 1516020F1 related to building setbacks and building separation from the PRD development standards. The request would be to reduce the building setback from 30 feet to 7, or 7 feet, 8 inches, and reduce the building separation from 25 feet to 8 feet. In relation to the statement towards hardship or practical difficulty, the PRD development standards create an unreasonable building envelope for one unit, and it negates all of their units and the detached garage on the site if the development standards were strictly applied, which would then result in less density would be achieved than what was historically there from a building standpoint, as well as what the comprehensive plan guides this parcel for. So this parcel is in a downtown mixed-use guidance, land use guidance, which allows for 12 to 40 units an acre for residential use out there. The setbacks and building separation would create a layout that would adversely impact the National Walnut, Walnut Street Historic District. And the setbacks, building separation would alter the essential character of the locality in which it's located in in a negative way. And the variance approval would allow the site to follow a layout and density that would be harmonious with the comprehensive plan's guidance, the National Walnut Street Historic District, and the essential character of the locality. So this is the exhibit I was speaking to a little bit ago, showing the PRD 30-foot setback that would apply to the perimeter of the site, which is shown in blue here, or purple, however you want to read it, as well as the 25-foot building separation that would need to be adhered to, which is established by the Ernst home here. And then if a, a new unit were to locate on, on the site, meeting the setback and the building separation here. So as you can see, the white space is essentially what would be unimpacted by that building setback and building separation requirement established by the PRD development standards. So it effectively would push a building back into the rear portion of the site and kind of completely exclude the ability to be able to establish a street front facing out towards Walnut Street. And this would essentially conflict with comments that have been received by SHIPPO in terms of the important, and the important pieces and objectives of the Walnut Street Historic District in terms of maintaining a street front, ensuring that this gap is filled in, as well as keeping that central corridor open. That new unit would effectively conflict with that as well. Setbacks out here would be atypical to what you see in a downtown setting and other residential areas. Separation as well would be very atypical for the downtown context. So really, what this exhibit is showing is just an unreasonable development approach for this property, if those PRD.
Well, and it's just very inconsistent with how the downtown is. One of the, when we went out and purchased, I can't remember where this was now, but we purchased the house where the parking lot is, and we purchased the house where the Ernst house is now. And the, at the time, SHIPPO was actually pretty concerned that we took down the house where the parking lot was, because they felt like it really disturbed the historic character of that, of that area. One of the reasons they allowed us to do that was because we were moving the Ernst house over into that site to the north, because the house that was there before, it was old, but it was in terrible condition.
They'll say the condition was pretty bad.
And one of the arguments that we made was that, hey, we also need to have enough parking to be able to support the businesses in downtown. And so that's ultimately why they agreed to allow us to put the parking in there. But subsequent to that, then the S house burned down. And if you remember, we went through quite a process with the state about even letting them, letting us tear that down, even though we determined a couple times that it was in really bad shape and was hard to do it. We even went for a couple grants from the state to, you know, through a couple processes to try to get dollars to try to preserve it, because ultimately, that's, they wanted to preserve a house on that site that was sort of consistent with what the, the Ernst house was to the south, because that sort of fills the, the, you know, the lot. It, it's ultimately why we really liked seeing the architect that came on, on this project that did with McDonald Mac, because they helped write the standards for the historic district nationwide. And we've worked with them on projects before, and so we knew that if we wanted to be able to be successful in going back to SHIPPO and showing up our project that they could support, we wanted to have people who actually knew what they're talking about at the table. So just to give you some context of sort of the process that we've gone through on this, because there used to be three, all three of those lots used to be filled with structures.
Wouldn't we have already done the variance for the Ernst house when we moved it in?
Uh, no.
It wasn't in a PRD at that time.
It wasn't in a PRD. So that, it was just a sing, it was just a lot. And so we just moved into that lot.
Question. So like with.
Liz done?
Well, I, I can, I can finish if you, but if you have questions, you guys keep the momentum going. It's fine.
Whatever you want to do.
Pertinent to this.
It's pertinent to this, right. So we talk about like, you know, setbacks, right? You know, these are standard setbacks across the city, correct?
For PRD districts.
For PRD districts, right. So if, or is the rest of downtown also effectively a PRD district?
No.
Downtown is a different zoning district?
Yeah, well.
There are some PRD districts in downtown, but again, they were redid at differently.
PRD districts.
Oh.
So the only ones that are outs, the only ones that are in PRD districts are the ones that we've actually redeveloped. And we've, we've condensed them into one project, so you could view them as one thing. But if you look across the rest of downtown, downtown is very different in a residential district than it is the rest of the city, because it's, there was only one type of development at one time. It was single-family houses. And so it, you didn't see PRDs because that just wasn't a, that wasn't a planning standard when, when the area around here was zoned.
Okay. So what, and so what we're seeing is an artifact of a newer planning instrument of the PRD.
Trying to be put into the historic district.
Exactly. And so, which kind of, okay, and the more, so this is, I'm just gonna tell a quick comment, which is that when we, where we kind of talk about the work we're doing to clean up our zoning ordinances and things like that, again, I feel like there should be a different classification of PRD or something related to downtown, because a lot of the, the rules that we apply from the Greater Suburban Chaska doesn't apply to downtown, because downtown's a different set of standards. I mean, so, you know, like this is just a great example of that. If we took all that, you know, the things that stand across anywhere else in Chaska, now it's variance, variance, variance of anything we want to do. If someone says, create my house, like burn down, but I want to build a replacement, it's like, well, but the footprint's a little different. Now we've got to go through that, you know, approval with this in mind instead, or get variances around it. So just a comment for that future piece, but. So just a comment for that future piece, but, okay, that makes a lot of sense in terms of that this is a PRD, different instrument.
I think that's a really good way to look at it, say, we're trying to use a modern tool on a historic district and it just doesn't work.
Yep, it totally makes sense, that's why, that's kind of a, this is a square peg in a round hole.
Yeah, and I think it will get cleaned up as part of the revisions to the ordinance. I think this thirty feet is actually something we looked at potentially changing last year and decided to just wait for the complete revision, because we knew it was going to be problematic.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, to go off, you know, the previous conversation about is it repeatable, are you creating, like, some of that just says, like, hey, again, has to be in the historic district, has to be, you know, all of these really narrows it down to it's this area, this property, it doesn't create a situation where.
There's not many situations like this in town.
Which is, exactly, which is a good point, because, I mean, it's just a very, I'm very sensitive to the very different nature of what we, the two things we just reviewed, particularly with location, applicant, it's that merit piece, right? So like I said, I, that's clear to me, I make sense, but I just wanted to make sure you get that stated, because they're back to back and naturally, you're comparing them.
Yeah, and we don't have, we also don't, SHPO has nothing to do with the other one. SHPO also has a say in this, and that's the, a huge piece of it.
Yep.
All right, so getting into the variance facts, again, I won't get into too much of this since we kind of glazed over this in the previous request, but state statute basically lays out the standards that need to be met in order to grant a variance which pertains to practical difficulties on a site, which in essence speak to unique characteristics that are present on the site that are not necessarily, are not necessarily present on other lots within the vicinity, or there's just pieces that are unique, that kind of set the stage of why a variance can be granted for a property. Also speaking to not altering the essential character of the locality in which the property is located in as well, I think is very important, and how we're looking at this variance request as well, given that this site is in downtown Chaska, but also is a part of that National Historic District, which also has its own set of standards and pieces that need to be met in order to maintain the integrity of that historic district. So these are the questions, again, I won't go over those, but getting to the findings of why the variance request should be granted in this certain circumstance is the request to deviate from the setbacks and building separation is reasonable. The property currently is vacant on the north side and contains the historic Ernst home on the south side. The unique physical constraint on the property comes from the existing Ernst home, which has set a precedence for the setback from the streetscape of Walnut Street, plus establishes a significant building separation limitation on the vacant lot to the north. The National Walnut Street Historic District would be severely hampered, which we've heard before from SHPO, if the vacant area is not filled in and the Ernst home is not occupied. Secondly, the characteristics unique to the property and not created by the applicant present practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance, specifically the existing placement of the historic Ernst home, which was a part of a larger community objective to preserve the building, as well as facilitate a downtown redevelopment project known as Fireman's Park. The National Walnut Street Historic District also emphasizes the importance of a consistent streetscape, adhering to the PRD, building setbacks and building separation would conflict with such emphasis. Thirdly, the proposed use of the property is reasonable and consistent with the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan, downtown master plan and zoning ordinance. The comprehensive plan guides this area to be downtown mixed-use, which allows for twelve to forty units per net acre for residential uses. The project will be six point six units per net acre and create a configuration that will be harmonious with the surrounding context and National Historic District. The proposal will further reinforce the downtown master plan's redevelopment project of Fireman's Park and providing a use that will save the Ernst home. And then lastly, the proposed use, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality, because the reduction in the setback and building separation will allow the site to provide a configuration and density that is consistent with downtown Chaska and necessary for the National Walnut Street Historic District. The essential character will be negatively altered if a variance is not granted. And then just to recap, HPC did review this application at their February meeting, and SHPO has also had a chance to provide a recent review of the project. HPC did review and approve the site alteration permit that was required for the site. They were favorable of the project as proposed. I think their only consideration leading into final is choosing a lap siding color that is a little bit lighter for the new units to kind of fit in with the Ernst home, as well as create contrast as well. And then SHPO provided a letter on March twenty-seventh, so not too long ago. They had a couple of comments related to the overall site layout, but more generally favorable of the direction that this is going in. I think their only comments that need to be worked on that are applicable to the site plan is ensuring that the fence on Unit One, which is the one that faces Walnut Street, is pulled back, so it's in line with the front elevation of Unit One. And they were also very favorable of the flat roof concept and design of the detached garage versus a pitched roof concept being kind of more minimally invasive compared to a pitch roof design. So they were supportive of a flat roof design on the detached garage. Just a couple of things to work on for final, working on the color of the lap siding that's proposed on the new units. Fence orientation meeting both SHPO comments, as well as anything that's a necessity for utility crews, because there are a couple electric boxes on the north side that will need access, so they'll need to work through that. And then continuing to coordinate with SHPO through this process as they continue to get approvals. So there are three motions on the table this evening for this request. One would be a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-38, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for Chaska Yards. A motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-39, which is approving the variance to Section 1516-020-F1. And then a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1033 or 1033, approving the amendment to PRD seventy-four. That concludes my presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant in the audience, too, if you have questions for them.
All right, questions for Liz?
How many, like, how many more steps with SHPO are there? Like, would they, because I thought there, like I saw, like sixty, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, they go through a thirty, sixty, ninety step process with SHPO, so almost like a three-step process like we do, and Todd might be able to speak to this a little bit better than I can, but effectively, they'll have kind of a more refined comment or review process with SHPO after this second step is finished with us.
Okay, so similar to us.
Or after even the final, yep, yep, it's very similar to ours.
What else?
The businesses that'll sit on the other side of this, have we talked to them at all, like, are they aware, I mean, I'm sure they'd probably like having more people around to come to their businesses, but I don't know if there was any conversation with them.
Yeah, we have talked, last summer, as we were walking around, talking about the reorientation of the businesses, the kind of those rear entrances, we did talk to them about, actually, a lot of them already kind of knew and were asking where things were at in the process, so.
I got a couple of things. You had said earlier, we hadn't seen this, but did, did we approve a concept of this?
We did, yep.
A concept, yeah.
January of twenty twenty-two.
Is there enough, was there enough changes in this, did they have to go back to concept? What do you determine, no?
No, the general concept was still very much the same. It was four units from the beginning.
I was thinking that, but it just seemed like there was a lot of things.
They had to go through preliminary twice.
Yeah.
Primarily because they were trying to get it down to not having an association. And that had to do with lot lines and stuff like that.
Just to clarify on that, this is the first time council was seeing the preliminary.
Right.
Planning Commission saw preliminary the first time, recommended approval, but then the applicant, once they got into the details and determination that they wanted to go to separate lots for the site and remove HOA, decided to request that they withdraw that preliminary application. Now they're coming forward with this revised preliminary application, which is very much the same as far as where the building footprints are.
It's more lot lines.
Now they're putting in lot lines.
Yeah.
Removing the HOA.
How is this going to be addressed? Walnut Street, Unit One, Two, Three, or are they going to have their own?
You know, addressing is something that our building official really takes the lead on, and he, he really likes to coordinate with the fire department.
I was going to say, because this, this could create issues for fire, I guess, by.
So they'll be working together, I, I can't tell you what the numbers will be, but, but he will work directly with the fire department.
It'll be just like a Jonathan address, so.
Yeah. One, zero, zero, ten, nine, seven, six.
Numbers for a phone number.
Six, seven, five, three, oh, nine. We got Mr. Jimmy in, and we got eight, seven, six.
One of them will be your cell phone number.
Everybody else has got it, why shouldn't they? And I, I did talk to staff earlier in the day about, was fire okay with this with the close proximity, because then sometimes when they get so close, they want them sprinkled, but apparently fire is okay with that.
And primarily because of certain materials they have to use on different sides of the house.
Okay, and that, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's probably not cheaper, but it could save a lot of things if there is a fire in one of the units, so.
I do, I like this, this looks really good, and I like the little addition on the shed or whatever on the back of the Ernst house, I think that's so cute. I kind of want that house now, so. I do agree, though, like with lighter colors to match millennial grage is leaving us, and I think having, like a more of a brown would fit the area better, but, yeah, just lighter, I guess, not necessarily brown, but lighter.
Okay, anyone else comment? Go ahead.
Echo the same comments over the lighter colors, but the garage, they have, each have a stall and it fits a regular-sized vehicle. The driveway outside of that, that fits a regular-sized vehicle as well.
Yep.
Is there, I know, maybe this is like a really detailed question, will there be, like designated signage on the outside of the garage? It just, I don't know, general parking.
Remember that one, that one picture they had?
They'll actually own their own garage.
Right, but I'm just thinking about like public and like the Paseos and the alleyways, and people just not, like, really understanding that that's like a private driveway? I just, I'm curious, like, will there be some sort of designated?
Probably see if it's a problem.
I know, and that, and that might be the case, you know, I just think about other places that I know where like they have a little bit more of a public driveway and like they have to put signage up, because people just like, don't get it.
They would pull right, they'd have to pull right up to a garage store, and then I guess.
I know, but I'm saying that I've seen it. I have totally seen it numerous occasions, so, just putting it up there, just asking the question. I know, you'd be shocked.
Signs are too many, too many signs.
I know, but you would be shocked.
I know.
Because they'd say, oh, I didn't see a sign. I didn't know.
Did you have somebody else over here?
I was just going to say that, you know, like, I really like the revision stuff plan overall, so, you know, I think it's like really solid and, you know, it's, you know, it's one of those things, it's kind of weaving that, you know, trying to weave that, thread that needle of meeting the SHPO requirements, as well as maintaining the integrity of the historic, the historic district, as well as, you know, providing, you know, housing in this kind of format, too, because we're trying to do something pretty unique here on a pretty unique piece of property with a historic structure, as well as a unique piece of historic land. So there's a lot of factors that go into this, so appreciate all the work that everyone's done on this to get it to this point, and it's been a long road here, so thank you for everyone for getting it this far, and, you know, look forward to seeing it at the finish line.
It's a cool project, I mean, I think it's really going to add a lot to.
I, I am excited for it, I've seen many, many concept plans on here, I'm excited to see that we're in preliminary and we're moving forward. You know, this is going on, for me, nearly ten years, but we've been working on trying to get this site done, so I'm excited, really excited to see this, and more excited to see it move forward. So I think, I don't know if we ever got past, well, we did get past preliminary on some of the other.
Yeah, I mean, to me, a big kudos to CDA, I mean, they, I mean, the thing that made this site the most difficult is the economics. And for them to, to work on getting grants with us and, you know, putting that in place and looking at the land trust as a model, I mean, I just, I think there was tools that they had that a private developer just wouldn't have been able to have as much leverage on.
And then, so, so the HPC has given them direction on what they can do with that, or do they have to work through them all through the remodel of the building?
Oh, no, there won't, I mean, once the HPC gives their approval, then it's just staff that monitors that.
Yep.
Yeah.
No additional steps with them.
Yeah.
You know, their supporting groups.
What's that?
No, supporting group.
Consulting groups.
Consulting, sorry.
Consulting groups.
I'll be kicking the can. All right, anyone else? With that, I guess, you know, again, we have three motions here. I would start, I'd like to start with Resolution 2023-38, which is really the preliminary, or preliminary site plan, building plan. So I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move for the approved Resolution 2023-38.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilon.
Second.
Second by Councilmember McGraw, again, that's, that's adopting Resolution 2023-38, which is the preliminary site and building plan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to look at 2023-39, which is the zoning of the variance.
variance.
I'll make a resolution, I'll make a motion.
Whatever.
To approve Resolution 2023-39.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember McGraw, adopting 2023-39, which is the variance on Chesky Yards. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, now we're looking at Ordinance 1033, which is changing from, I don't have it here, but changing that to a PUD, PRD.
That's approving the zoning ordinance amendment.
Amendment, yep.
PRD seventy-four.
I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Oh, here they are.
I'll second.
So a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong, to approve the zoning ordinance. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. That is it, right?
That's correct, that's all of them.
That's everything?
Yep.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Can't wait to see it get going. All right, next we are on HC, which is adopt Resolution 2023-40, approving concept plan for 3740 Chestnut.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item coming from the Planning Commission recommending for approval. This is actually the old Treehouse building that's north of Pondview Buildings, and applicant is looking to turn that into sort of Small Bay Industrial, which we've talked about before, we really have a demand in our community for, had the privilege of meeting address today at another meeting, something similar. We really have a demand i- in our community for, um, had the privilege of meeting Adreus today at a, at another meeting, uh, something similar. So great to see you back tonight again. And, uh, Liz is gonna be, uh, presenting this and going through, uh, what's being proposed as a concept.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We have a concept plan request, uh, this evening for the address of 3740 Chestnut Street, uh, being proposed by Adreus Asha Kenas.
Did you go ahead?
Did I do it? I said it like 10 times before, just to make sure. Um, the site in question is, uh, located on, uh, the aerial exhibit on this slide. It's highlighted in blue. Uh, the property is located on the northern, um, extents of the city. Uh, mainly kind of in where the industrial areas of the city exist today. Uh, so there is direct or adjacent access off of Highway 41 here or Chestnut Street. Um, the property is, um, surrounded, uh, by industrial properties on the north, south, and east sides. And then on the west side, uh, it is adjacent to Big Woods Lake. So there is, um, that, uh, natural adjacency there.
They don't, that, what's that, blue and water?
This?
It's where the fish are.
It's the whale.
Why is that outland?
I don't know.
I, I think it's just the contour line of the depth of the lake. Just happens to be a similar color.
Are you worried about it?
The property.
I agree, it's odd.
I'll make sure to have a, a good answer for that next time, hopefully. They're also adding a tiki bar island.
That's what I'm going, are we gonna get submarines and stuff like that, or what?
A bridge.
There's an underwater tunnel.
All right, let's go.
Uh, so as Matt stated, uh, this property was formerly, uh, utilized by the Treehouse Organization. And I believe they date back to the early 90s, um, since locating there. But as of recent, um, they have sold the site to Adreus. And they have vacant the area, or vacated the area. Um, so that is why a development proposal is being pursued on the site, uh, today. Uh, with some of the ordinance changes, uh, that took place with public engagement, uh, pretty recently here. Um, there is a requirement now, as a part of the concept plan, uh, application process, that a neighborhood meeting is conducted prior to a co- uh, concept plan application being submitted to the city. Uh, so the, uh, now property owner did conduct a, uh, neighborhood meeting on Tuesday, February 7th, uh, to introduce the project that they're proposing this evening. Uh, they didn't have anyone show up to that meeting, uh, but they did still take the liberty to reach out to some of the Pondview, uh, tenants and neighbors. Uh, just to inform them or directly provide, uh, the information of the project that they're proposing. Uh, they did get a couple of responses, uh, back, uh, specifically from River Valley Dance and Edward Sales. Um, generally, uh, both of these, um, uh, personnel were supportive of the project. Um, and have, uh, communicated that they would like to continue to coordinate on certain items, uh, like access, utility, snow removal, and a couple of other things. But, um, they have been, um, favorable of the direction it's been going down. Uh, the site is a little over two acres in size. Uh, existing conditions on the property is it contains a single family home and a detached garage. Uh, which you can faintly see on this diagram here, but the home, uh, really sits kind of more in the center of the site. Uh, the detached garage sits more on the south side of the site. Uh, the site is currently wooded, um, and has, uh, view sheds, uh, out to the lake. Um, there is, uh, some notion or, um, anticipation that there are wooded steep slopes, uh, that are on the west side of the property. Those have yet to be formally, uh, delineated with staff, um, out in the field yet. Um, but we still anticipate that those are present on the site. Access into the site, uh, comes from an existing shared access off of Highway 41 here. That's shared with the Pondview Buildings to the south. And that access, uh, does plan to remain, uh, with the project proposal. Um, I will note, um, that there have been some active communication, um, with MINDOT, uh, on the treatment of this access, uh, out to the highway. And that will still be ongoing and flushed out.
Actually what we met on today.
Yep.
Uh, so it was decided to, uh, make that a right in, right out, uh, and.
Well, that is happening now.
Yep, and then, uh, sign it as it's going, as people are going north so that they know to take the roundabout back to that, uh, back to that entrance.
So everybody in that section.
Everybody was at the meeting.
Okay.
We had like five, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
No, every, everybody was at the meeting.
Some conversation there about lack of, when they said no one showed up, about.
No, we.
We're not getting notices and.
Everybody was there.
Good. Glad.
Including Minda.
What?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Liz, sorry.
Yep, no problem. Um, just in terms of zoning and guidance for this parcel. So it currently is in an open zoning district, which is basically a holding zone until it, uh, redevelops or develops. And, uh, an appropriate, uh, zoning designation will be put on the property when it does get rezoned. But it is guided in the comprehensive plan to be an industrial site. Uh, so what they're proposing this evening is consistent with that guidance. Um, these are a couple images, um, kind of more interior to the site, uh, looking out, uh, from the deck area towards the back of, um, where the lake is. As well as some images from Highway 41, uh, showing kind of existing conditions out there. There is a pretty significant berm on the west side there, um, that, um, kind of protects or screens, um, the view into this site in particular. So the request this evening is for concept plan, uh, approval for the construction of an office industrial building totaling 16,000 square feet. Um, it would be a multi-tenant, uh, building for approximately eight, uh, tenants within the building totaling roughly, uh, under 2,000 square feet each for these tenant spaces. Uh, the tenants that they're targeting, uh, for this building are small emerging businesses that are transitioning out of smaller work environments such as their homes or just smaller spaces in general. Um, they will specialize mostly in small production operations, manufacturing, product distribution, or professional services like photography businesses, uh, and the like. Um, the businesses that are prohibited from locating in this area would be any businesses that require outdoor storage or any type of vehicle repair, um, associated with it. So these, again, are for, um, uh, a demand out there for smaller, lighter, industrial type business users. And it, this model is very similar to the Chaska Tech Center that was recently approved on Fire Lane and Chaska Boulevard near downtown, um, Chaska here. So there is quite a demand for, um, this type of space, um, uh, for these types of businesses. Uh, the concept plan is shown on, uh, this slide here. As I mentioned before, the, uh, existing shared access on Highway 41 would be the primary access, uh, into this site. And where, um, uh, the access exists today for the site. Um, this would basically provide access to the parking lot, um, and parking around, um, mostly around the building as they're showing here. They are also showing, uh, due to, um, the property to the north, ha- what appears to have, uh, buildable area there. This is property owned by the Tell Business, uh, to the north. They currently have a building on Lyman Boulevard, but they own property, uh, adjacent to this property. Uh, it does appear that there's some developability of this property. Um, so they are showing an access preserved, um, on the north side of their parking lot. Uh, should this area, uh, be developed at any time, they are allowing that access to occur out to, um, Highway 41 there in the event that that develops. Uh, the building.
Minda, is okay with, are you saying there's, that'd be another access to 41?
They'd have to go, it'd be a cross axis he's been to get down to the existing access.
Okay.
Right, yep. And I think they're still trying to get direct communication with Tell here. And I know they've made the efforts to reach out to them on a number of times. And I think they've been unsuccessful in trying to get ahold of someone just to, uh, kind of understand what their intentions are and if there's ways to, um, you know, have, um, an understanding of, uh, grading limits as well as what Tell wants to do with that portion of the site. I think they're still working on, hopefully getting communication with them, uh, but they certainly have made the effort to do so. Uh, the building is situated in the center of the site. Again, this is a 16,000 square foot building. It's a rectangular, uh, shaped building, um, and then they'll have, uh, loading and pedestrian access on the north and south sides of the building, uh, which would have overhead doors for, uh, kind of that, uh, access to the, the warehouse space, um, uh, proposed for these tenant spaces. Uh, and then again, parking would be kind of on all three sides of the building. Um, there are areas of dead end parking there. Um, so there are concerns with just the overall circulation of how this works, uh, for the users. But, um, also for emergency vehicles to be able to access the site and, uh, turn around and, and so forth. So that's certainly something that'll need to be worked on as they proceed into preliminary. But at concept, obviously something that's not fully fleshed out at this point. Uh, they, they have done their own, uh, analysis of some turning movements on the site for the type of users that, uh, would use the site with, um, what they understand would be the largest vehicle that would be able to be, um, or that. The users that are identified here would actually use, which would be at most a 30-foot long, uh, truck or box truck type user. And so they've done their own, uh, turning analysis here to show how that can work. But I think, again, as we noted before, um, emergency vehicles also need to be accommodated on the site and how that works. And that'll be something they'll need to work on moving into preliminary. Uh, the building, um, is shown here, um, in terms of the overall design. They, they plan to use a mix of materials, uh, of either stone or some type of masonry base, uh, some eaves and some wood, uh, siding or paneling and glass and overhead metal doors. Um, so they'll have to meet the industrial design standards, uh, under the city's code. Um, I think our comment, uh, as they move on to preliminary is showing a design that provides harmonious, um, inclusion of the materials uh, and, uh, harmonious, um, inclusion of kind of the context of which they're locating in, being in Chaska. So trying to kind of find that balance, um, between those multitude of, of factors out there. But again, this is concept, so they'll have some, some things to think about and work on, um, as they move on to subsequent steps here. Uh, so just to recap, some of the things that they'll have to work on, uh, they'll have to get their delineations for wooded steep slope on the sites to really enter, understand the limitations of the setbacks that apply to that. Working on the circulation of vehicles in the site, uh, not only for the users, uh, but also emergency vehicles. See if there's ways to really create efficient circulation around the entire building, um, if that can be achieved. Uh, working on the building design and materials and how they can be more, more harmoniously applied to the building. But also provide, uh, tie-ins to, um, Chaska as a whole and as a context. And then, uh, also working on figuring out if a shared access agreement is needed for the access to the highway. Uh, at this time, we don't know if there is one currently in place. Um, so something we'll have to hopefully get determination on in the next steps to determine if a new one is needed. So with that, um, we're asking you to make a motion, uh, this evening to adopt Resolution Number 2023 dash 40, which is approving the concept plan for 3740 Chestnut Street. And then happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicant is here too.
Anybody got questions for Liz? I think this is an absolutely awesome project for that site. I, I think it, it's, it's, it's a perfect for that location. Just often wondered what could go in there, and this is ideal. The only thing I, I would ask is, is there, what happens if somebody's got like a dump truck and a Bobcat? Is there enough room to maneuver that? And I don't know if that's not what you're thinking, but I, I guess in my mind, that's what I'm thinking is a small contractor that has a Bobcat and a dump truck. Can they, can they maneuver in there? It looks a little tight, but I don't know. That can be worked out. Again, this is only a concept plan. And, you know, for people watching, we're gonna see this twice more. Um, this is just to see if the plan, uh, meets, um, you know, our standards and ordinances and stuff like that. So, um, but I, I think it's a great use. I, I'm excited. I think that we've talked about how important and the need for that type of bi- uh, facility is in town. Um, so I, I think it's, I think it's great.
Okay, also echo. Echo the mayor's comments on that, you know, thank you for bringing this to Chaska. You know, this, we're very much in need of this type of, of, this type of product out there in the marketplace. There's, uh, you know, a lot of people are, you know, growing their businesses in need of this sort of like small industrial space to be able to continue to grow. And, you know, I always look at this as an opportunity for us as a community, as these, these are like economic incubators, right? You know, big businesses get to be big businesses because they start small and they start somewhere. And they need to grow out of their garage, and this is the, that next step. So, um, you know, this is a great opportunity for, gonna be for at least, you know, you know, hopefully more than half dozen different, uh, small businesses to grow. And, um, you know, really happy that, uh, you brought, they've brought this to Chaska and, you know, look forward to seeing this develop further. Thank you.
All right, anywhere else? Anyone else? You wanna make any comments? You don't have to. You're good. You'd only be commenting if we were arguing with you, right? All right, anyone else here?
I just, uh, just comment, it's high level. I, some of the things have already been discussed question wise. Uh, I just like the, I just like to comment that it's just really nice to see you guys taking an extra effort to reach out to your, you know, potential business neighbors. And just making sure that they're aware and just garnering that kind of feedback, you know? It's just nice to see that proactive step, so appreciate that.
I think that's the right entrance into that facility now. Glad that got solved too, so we got a lot of things done.
Yep.
All right, anyone else? Otherwise, I need a motion one way or another.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2023 40.
Okay, that's, I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Again, this is Resolution 2023 dash 40, approving concept plan for 3740 Chestnut Street. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Glad to see you next time.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we move to 8D, uh, transient accommodation renewals.
I was sort of laughing with the chief that, uh, we stuck him on the agenda last.
Yeah.
I just thought you wanted to come and hang.
You brought coffee, right?
I had to go make some, so don't judge.
Well, Mayor, Councilmember's item in front of you tonight is our annual transit accommodation renewals. Uh, back in 2018, we did set up ordinances and amended those in 2021, uh, for hotels and motels, uh, known as transit accommodation license. And it's really, the purpose of those is to make sure that we have accommodations that take steps to make sure that they're discouraging the types of behaviors in our community that we don't want to see associated with, uh, hotels and, and motels. Uh, to protect, you know, their guests and also the, the public as well. So as part of that, uh, ordinance, there is, uh, three levels that are assigned, uh, to, uh, the hotels and their renewals. Um, you know, our hope is, is that, uh, everyone is assigned to Level 1, uh, because they're one that don't, doesn't really have issues, that they're, they're proactively working to address those types of things. Uh, but, uh, we do establish a Level 2 and a Level 3. But we do establish a level two and a level three in those to basically sort of have sort of progressive steps that we can take if there's issues that we continue to see there. We currently have two facilities in the community that, that need to be licensed through our transient accommodations ordinance. And each year what we do is we have the police department review the information from, from, from the hotel. And a lot of times, it doesn't take much review because if there's issues, they've been working with it over the course of some time. So you'll see in the staff report that with Super Eight, they were, the recommendation is that they be classified as a level two, which is the same as what they were the previous year, and that Town Square Place be classified at a level three, which previously they were at a level two. And so as part of this, this is a process with these. And that's one of the reasons our attorney is here, is that this is a process. And so back at the beginning of March, both facilities were contacted by, by the Chaska Police Department. And then the police department's been working with them to come up with a plan that they're going to need to meet to be able to, to meet the expectations of what, what we would have in our, in our ordinance. So Chief Seibert is here to basically be able to go through, you know, some of the findings that he had and some of the, the direction that he's recommending as, as part of this. And then certainly our city attorney can sort of answer any questions as it relates to process for how we go through these, if we do have facilities that we've seen issues with. So I'll turn it over to Ryan and you can open there.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it, Mayor. Council members, I will be briefed tonight because I know it's past nine o'clock. But it was important to me to come here and speak to you directly and answer any questions if you have them versus just putting together a staff memo on this. Kevin, I think we can skip to slide two. So Matt covered a lot of the qualifying calls and what that looks like and what, you know, and I can always elaborate. But what gets people to a level two or a level three is either those qualifying calls or felony, qualifying felony complaints. So I just wanted to briefly outline in two thousand twenty-two as part of our review, there were forty-two total calls for service to Super Eight. Three of those were qualifying calls just based upon the staff review of those incidents, and there was one felony complaint. So thereby it made the level two designation based on that one qualifying felony. Next slide, Kevin. Reviewing Town Square Place.
He's Alex, by the way.
Alex, sorry. From two thousand twenty-two, Town Square Place had a total of one hundred and fifty-eight calls for service, seventeen of which staff reviewed as qualifying calls and two felony complaints. So again, the felony complaints were what got Town Square Place to a level three designation. Probably the most important thing to note is upon reviewing this information, what has staff done with this? And I worked with the city attorney, we drafted a letter that had been revised from previous years, just notifying ownership and ultimately management of both properties, potentially what their classification was going to be this year, and then also specifically outlining the level two and level three requirements in that letter. After that was sent, city staff from the police department administration met with management from both organizations, and we asked for them to come up with essentially an implementation plan, if there were any items based on the level two or level three requirements that had not yet been met. And I'll kind of go through briefly in some of the subsequent slides of the information that we learned. And again, we informed them directly of the special requirements of level two and level three, depending upon which was applicable to them. But the most important, or one of the most important takeaways is we also committed both as city staff and as management of the facilities to continually review any subsequent or future incidents that we might see at the properties, take a look at those, if there's qualifying calls or any type of qualifying felonies, and how that might impact special requirements both for the remainder of this year and also potentially into the future. In terms of Super Eight, again, this is a high level summary. If you want me to get more specific, I certainly can. But in no particular order, following special requirements of level two, they already have onsite and have held for a period of time computerized records of all tenants or guests. People that are a tenant of the property, they're not allowed to have any other guests in their rooms. It's not like you can sublease or anything, whatever terminology you might want to use. They do have a zero tolerance approach to any types of issues or problems at the property. They do weekly inspections of rooms. And Julie Jenke was present for these meetings as well. And Bullside said that they do have an ongoing working relationship between the police department and management at the Super Eight. There is one area that does not one hundred percent align with the special requirements of a level two, but it is the corporate policy with Super Eight not to retain video. They do have a live viewing capability of different cameras in the facility, but that's something that they're going to have to see clarification on from their corporate entities through Super Eight.
So that answers one of my questions. I was curious if Super Eight had that corporate connection. I was actually Googling, is Super Eight a franchise or how is it owned or how is it operated? So, okay, I was curious on how that, because they're obviously a fairly well-known national brand to somebody, if you want to use that term.
I certainly don't know the ins and outs of the franchise details, but yeah, that came up several times with corporate policies and expectations. Another part of the level two special requirement talks about guests not being able to use alcohol in common areas. They have that policy in place relating back to their zero tolerance approach. And also Julie has been and will continue to expand doing walkthroughs of the property and conducting security assessments as needed with management.
Before you move to the next hotel, just a general question. So, I mean, it sounds like a lot of the tenant, or a lot of the guests are long-term tenants. Am I wrong? Or, I mean, what percentage of guests are staying long-term there?
I wouldn't be able to give you an exact percentage, but I do believe that your speculation is correct in the sense that most guests at this premise are longer duration and they're placed there by different entities. If Julie were here, she probably could give you a more accurate figure, but they do slate a certain percentage of their units that I believe are, you know, intended more of your traditional type hotel setting. But you are correct. From, to the best of my understanding, you're talking about longer duration stays.
Because I was really going the same way, the, the way you were talking this, this seemed more like an apartment building than a motel. And is that, and I'm sure we have no ability to change that. And, and then my next question is, is I think this one, you had forty-two calls. How many of these are frequent flyers? The same people, the same people, the same people? Because then they become apartment buildings. And it seems like to me we're missing something. And I've harped long enough that we need a hotel. If these places are all full with people that are being positioned there, that's different. I don't know. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way. It just doesn't, doesn't seem right to me.
I, I'm sure there's probably somebody in the room that's better qualified to, you know, talk about, you know, hotels and different types of arrangements. But I think that, and again, I'm speculating, but there's probably a legal distinction in terms of how long a contract or some type of duration can occur in a hotel before it turns into an apartment legally. I'm just, I'm speculating.
Do you know, does that, is that defined their ordinance as far as how long somebody can stay in there before they have to vacate the unit?
Yeah, so the ordinance applies to all buildings that have six units or more where the stay is thirty days or less. So that's how it's defining the transient requirements and when this ordinance will apply to a facility. But it doesn't have limitations on, you know, what rooms need to be, what type of room.
But if, I guess, question would be is, if somebody is staying in the, in, if they're having guests that are staying longer than thirty days, is that, are they not in compliance with our ordinance then?
So that being a zoning ordinance question, I haven't looked at Super Eight, but we did look at the Town Square.
My question goes to both, because I had a good feeling that that's no different there.
Yeah, the Town Square is in the, one of the downtown districts, which does, does allow apartments, you know, above the, the street level.
But it's not licensed for that. It's a hotel, right?
It is a hotel, yeah. And we have the most control if it is a hotel under this transient ordinance. Because once, once the chief gets to the requirements for the level three, you're going to see there's some pretty significant requirements that are going to apply to them now.
Because I, you know, I look at, I look at what it says there, guests not allowed to consume alcohol.
In common areas.
Now, when you say guest, is that?
Staying at the hotel.
Okay, so that's not someone that's there and someone comes in?
No.
So you're saying, okay.
If they're going to.
Because I look at, I guess I keep looking at that. The way it's, we're explaining this, these are apartment buildings, and I look at guest, is someone coming?
Yeah, no, the guest is them. They, if they're going to consume alcohol, they have to do it within their room.
I didn't even know there was a common area in there.
It'd be like the lobby and areas adjacent outside. Into your second pointer question, Mr. Mayor, I mean, yes, a lot of these calls, I mean, you do have problematic individuals that, you know, are going to come for multiple calls. But the one thing that's important also to mention is we are very particular in terms of what we consider a qualifying call. If there's something that's medical related, somebody, you know, needed some form of assistance. We are very articulate in terms of what we use as a qualifying call.
Who are pretty lenient.
Well, I, I think one of the things we have to consider, and this was a big concern when we set up the ordinance, is we also don't want to discourage calls. And so, and so that's why we're, that's why we're really picky about what we consider a qualifying call.
That's what I say. So we're pretty lenient about.
Yeah, we want to make.
If they have a bad call, it's a bad call.
Yes. We want to make sure. We want to make sure that if we go down the road of classifying, because you're going to see it especially when we get to level three. But we want to make sure that if we push somebody into a level three situation, which is going to require them to do things that I am sure they are not going to want to do, that, that we can clearly articulate why the number of calls that we have fall into both qualifying and then also ultimately do they fall into felonies that, that occur there.
All right, I'll be quiet. Let you finish.
That's John's job, is to ask questions before the slide comes up.
I waited this time.
We can do the next slide, please.
Alex.
So on to the, the other property, which is Town Square Place. And if you remember back from a few minutes ago, they do have a level three classification that is being recommended for this year with license renewal. And same thing, I'm just going to go through the list, and some of these are going to be level two, some will be level three requirements. But same thing, as you're looking at at Super Eight, that guests here are also prohibited from making loud noises and drinking in common areas, and management did confirm that they have a similar policy in place as to Super Eight prohibiting that activity. They also are subject to having to do background checks for any employees that are onsite at the property. And management did confirm that they, they engage in that practice. They also are required to have onsite staff twenty-four hours a day as part of a level three requirement. And they did confirm that they have three individuals that live onsite and they split evening rotations. But I do have to notate that our officers have, have observed on multiple occasions in the evenings, there is not front desk staff. It's an on-call situation where somebody gets called. But again, we can get back to that in a minute. Parking passes are issued to vehicles in the lot, which is a requirement at the level three. They do engage in daily safety walks if they identify graffiti, acts of vandalism, anything else like broken windows theory. If you're aware with what that is, they said that they have mechanisms in place to fix those issues. Next slide, please, Alex. We also did inform them of the need, based on a level three requirement, to expand lighting, which I can't remember the details in the ordinance, but it has to be at a certain brightness or what have you. And that also would include areas in the parking lot. We also discussed that there needs to be further evaluation in terms of the overall need and possible phasing of armed security onsite. I do think it's prudent at this time to continually evaluating this because this would be a new requirement at level three that we made management and ownership specifically aware of with this letter that I mentioned for renewal in the sit-down meeting. And I'll talk about this again in a minute, but recognizing that we continue to see issues throughout the year, whether those are qualifying calls, they're felony qualifying issues, this could be something that city staff could revisit and try to get that as part of their implementation plan. And then also management said that they welcome a semi-annual audit, which is also spelled out as a level three requirement, just making sure that they are making steps towards this implementation plan and items that we've identified as a need, or I'm sorry, as part of a special requirement at level three are being fulfilled. Next slide, please. So the keys here, and I've mentioned some of this already, but we as a police department, also as city staff, we're going to continue to monitor police responses that we see at both of these properties. And we're going to determine if they're qualifying incidents, qualifying felony incidents, and evaluate that again against the implementation plan and the dialogue that we continue to have with both management companies. Also, between the community partnership officer and the rest of our department, just continuing our collaboration and expanding it where possible between the police department, other city staff and management. But the key here again is just evaluating what we're seeing in terms of, are there public safety concerns? Are there nuisance concerns? And are there additional steps, you know, that we as staff can take? Are there provisions again in the level two, level three requirements of the ordinance that need to be, again, discussed with management and figure out how to phase those steps in? So again, very high level. Happy to answer any questions if you have them, but I just, I figured this made more sense rather than a staff memo, because I know you have a request for action for you to renew both licenses. So please, if you have any questions, I'm here.
So what happens at, at the level three if the, if the property owners fail to meet the requirements of the level three?
So I can address that. So they have until August first under the ordinance to meet the requirements. And if they don't, then the council may by council action suspend or revoke the license if they want to.
That's why it was so important as part of this to have, you know, these things are things that were talked about between, you know, the chief, police staff and the hotel owners of saying, you know, okay, these are the things you're going to do. And them agreeing, say, yeah, we're going to do those. So that when, if we continue to see issues, that we have something really clear to go back and say, hey, we agreed that these were the things that were going to be addressed. And so if we get to, you know, if we get to August first and we see things get worse, or if we see, you know, see that things aren't following through on, it gives something concrete to be able to bring back to you guys to say, you know, we don't have to wait until the next license renewal to do this, that it brings, gives us something concrete to bring back to you guys to consider for actually holding the license or not.
So just playing, playing this out a little bit, playing this thread. If, let's say the property owner says, great, fine, you know, or let's say we end up revoking the license, property owner says, fine, they're all long-term tenants anyway, I'll just send a bunch of long-term leases.
Yeah, that was my question, is can, can they turn it into an apartment complex?
So that'll, that'll come down to zoning issue. As whether or not it can accommodate that use. You know, and I should explain also that as far as a suspension or revocation goes, you know, either one, a suspension or revocation, this is going to be like a liquor license, either one's going to be a devastating blow to the business, obviously. If it's suspended or if it's revoked. They will have hearing rights and will have to go through all those hearing rights. But, you know, as part of this process, in addition to the items that are listed in the ordinance, the city council can put on reasonable conditions as part of their license also. So I don't. So, um, I don't think it'd be probably appropriate at this point, given that there are a lot of requirements to meet already. But if problems continue, you know, possibly one way we can address this concern regarding people staying a long time is maybe put in some conditions to address that. But otherwise, if they want to turn it into a different use, so we're going to have to do a zoning analysis. Like I said, we've, um, we took a, a look at the Town Square property as to how that might play out, but I haven't looked at Super eight yet. We've been focusing on, you know, the, the issues that are arising with their current uses.
Are, are some of these? I can't think of the right word. Some of the problems that we're having there are due to, uh, some of the people that are putting people up there? And do we have any authority to go to that entity and say, hey, this is not working? I mean, do we have that ability?
Well, we have, we have the ability to put-
Pulp names.
Yeah, conditions on licenses, but I don't know exactly what you're talking about, so maybe the chief can do that.
And I think I can speak to some of that. I mean, we have conducted roundtables with some of the various organizations that we're referring to that do commonly place individuals in these facilities. And there's been some organizations that we speculate have produced individuals with more problematic behaviors, if you want to call it that, and others we've heard very little from their clients. So we have engaged and have a good working relationship with a lot of these organizations. I think, to me, the key to focus on is behavior of individuals. And if we're having issues, making sure that we have a good relationship with management at both of these organizations. And then on the backside of it, the organizations that are placing folks, being able to have a mechanism to identify what group they might be coming from to see, you know, if somebody does get kicked out, you know, try to figure out more long-term options for that individual. So it's kind of a long-winded answer, Mayor, but we've been looking at that. I wouldn't say that we have a perfect mechanism in place. It's variable from one placement organization to the next.
But if these, if these folks that are running this place really want to work with us, they can fix the problems by who they put in there. And do they, is even, is it even used as a hotel anymore? I mean, most people that I've talked to go there and generally walk away. So, I, I guess it still goes back to the early question. Are these really even be used as a hotel anymore? Or are we putting up people from other entities in this facility and taking away the ability to make it truly a hotel motel?
It, I mean, from my past experience and information learned, I, I think it's probably a relatively small percentage of rooms that would be considered a traditional hotel, I think. Whether, whatever the duration is, I can attest to, but I think that is a, a larger percentage of occupancy, is longer term.
Okay, I, I, I mean, part of this whole thing is the fact that there's no one here representing themselves. And, and they're at this point, it just tells me that, and, and I look at all the things that are being required, really requires our city staff time there. Because we're the ones that have to do all this, and it just, I don't, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know what we can do, but to me, it's getting to be ridiculous. The, the amount of staff time that we have to put into that building, and now even more that. I, I get it that we're kind of tied, but I still think it goes back to the entities that are putting people in there.
I think that, or there's ways to address that. I think by using our ordinance as it should be used, it starts to address some of those concerns without, you know, I think it could be, maybe, I don't know if dangerous is the right word, to, to, we have to consider all the factors of saying, you know, you can't, we don't want them to have vouchers there anymore, or whatever it is. I think there's so much more that has to go into that thought, rather than just starting at the root of the cause and saying, okay, these facilities need to be managed correctly first. And then if there's other things that are still contributing, okay, that's a different look. But I think the basis of this is that we have maybe a management that needs to take some other actions to really address things, and let's start there. That's kind of how I see it.
Well, and to me, that's what it all boils down to, and to me, that's, that's exactly why we put these things in place, is to say, at the, at the end of the day, it's, it's a responsibility of the management there. It's not their responsibility, uh, uh, I, they're, it's their place of business. It's, it's their responsibility for what we have in our ordinance. And from my perspective, I think we just take our ordinance as far as we can. And if there continues to be issues that exist, that we just take it to that next step and next step and next step. And, yeah, I, I've been through this a few times in my career, not on hotels. It's usually been on liquor establishments, where these are, uh, these are long drawn-out processes, because you enforce one thing and they come up with a way to do another thing. But eventually, you just keep on chipping away at it and chipping away at it and making it clear that, at the end of the day, it's about the business. And it's about, is the business being responsible to the ordinance that we have in place? And so, you know, I, I think, you know, what, what you're hearing chiefs say is that this is, this is a step-by-step thing. You know, that we have to, we have to go through and say, can they turn things around and, and deal with the behaviors that are there with what we're placing out now? If they can't, then we need to move even farther. And if they can't do that, then we need to move even farther, and we need to continue to, to push our ordinance as far as we can, as long as they're not stepping up to their responsibilities.
What happens after level three?
Well, we can revoke it.
Right, but you keep saying there's more, I'm trying to understand what more there is.
Well, I, I, I guess, you know, my thought would be, level three, they have to have a licensed armed uniformed security guard there from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
It's expensive.
It's expensive, it's never happened before, and will that take some pressure off the police department? Maybe, I mean, we'll have to see. But that's a pretty significant requirement.
It is, and I also think we have to think about this as far as, I, I always think about it not about what are the steps we're taking now, but what are the ultimate steps that we might have to take? And if we have to get to the point where we say, your license is revoked, like Mike said, in the ordinance, it's going to say they have certain rights to be able to challenge us on that. How can we go back and demonstrate that we've taken every progressive step that, that we can to try to work with them and that they continue to fail at each progressive step? Because ultimately, the worst thing in the world to me is when you go and you try to enforce something, and then somebody tells you that you can't.
And, and to Matt's point, I mean, look at this almost as like a, a reset, which I believe will be foundational if there are additional steps that staff would have to make recommendation on. And I believe by resetting this with the letter, meeting with, uh, management, that we've removed the possibility for ambiguity that existed prior, which would make next steps or phasing, like I've mentioned a few times, of these requirements, especially at the level three, more feasible.
So what does the phasing look like? Can, like, they have till August, I believe, I understood from what you said, to have some of these things happen? So like, to me, the two that stand out as seemingly being very helpful is 24-hour front desk and the armed guard. So what does that look like? Are we truly expecting them to have that in place by August? Or, because you mentioned phasing, so.
So, part of our conversation with management was based on reasonableness, given prior ambiguity that existed at, you know, level two, level three special requirements. So recognizing that reset discussions had with management. Again, it's going to be reviewing police incidents at the property, whether it's qualifying calls for service, or probably more than likely your qualifying felonies. If we see a continued pattern, we see a worsening of that pattern, that's probably where I would make a recommendation that, you know, it, maybe we put everything on the table, or maybe it's just a few options, but you are 100% correct. That would be 24/7 dedicated front desk staff would be one of those things that we would look at phasing. The armed security presence would be another, and there's probably some other likely steps that we would look at as well. But at least in prior staff conversations, we were going to commit to an evaluation of what type of police response or incidents that we see that might warrant further phasing.
And I do believe we have, um, under the ordinance, you know, the, the flexibility to phase, because it says, once we get to August 1st, and if it's not compliant, you know, we may suspend or revoke the license under the ordinance. I think it's going to be somewhat dependent upon what chief says. I mean, if he's seen good pro, progress, um, you may decide that, uh, you know, it's going in the right direction. And even if we're not quite there by August 1st, it's going in the right direction. And, uh, we won't necessarily have to take action at that point, but that'll be up to you.
And that's near.
Okay, so they've been kind of put on notice, like, hey, you're level three now. We expect to see some really positive improvement. This is your notice. If it's not happening, this, we're going to go to, we're going to go to the armed guard, the front desk. That, so that's kind of what we're-
Yeah, because again, I think at the end of the day, if we do get to the point of saying, we just have to revoke the, the, these guys' license, because they're just not living up to these standards, at the end of the day, I want to be making that record, recommendation to you, thinking that we're going to be successful.
If, if we're challenged.
Um, you know, if, you know, and that's why we're working with Mike, is to say, how do we make sure that if we get to that point, that we feel really confident that we've done everything we can to, to show those steps, so that if we get challenged, we can sustain a challenge?
So how often are we reviewing? Is it, do you have a cadence at which we'll be reviewing? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Julie historically has been reviewing this monthly, but this is something where I'll be a part of that review process with her. And I think at least in the interim, that's probably going to be a monthly basis. If things were to change in the future, I would anticipate my involvement quarterly in that, but I would say that moving forward here in the interim, we'd do that monthly.
Just to clarify a question. So if you get to August 1st, progress is being made, we do nothing. Come September, something dramatically, September, or we'll say October 1st is for terminology. Really, the October 1st is like the gate open moment.
August 1st.
August 1st, excuse me. Like, if something dramatically changed in October, we still have the ability to make that decision.
The ordinance just sets a minimum date that you can do it.
Or we could do it a year from now at this renewal process, potentially.
I mean, the summer at least is a good time for them to really show improvement, because I would assume that's where majority gets warm out, people get naughty, I don't know why, but.
They'll likely be busier.
They commit more crimes when it's warm out. Maybe that's a better way to say it.
It, it, in what I s- In what I say that we're trying to create a foundation upon which, I mean, if, if additional steps are needed, we're trying to make a solid foundation to provide you with good options if you indeed decide to take them. Because again, I can't, I can't understate the fact that there, somebody could have made a very good claim regarding ambiguity of the requirements in the past. But like you had mentioned, Councilmember Hadfield, I mean, there's, that ambiguity's been removed both through a letter in an in-person meeting, and it's been clear what their current requirements are, and the fact that additional requirements under their, their current levels, you know, might be an ask even within this license cycle if those issues continue.
I think we also have to understand that, you know, we never in the past needed a, a hotel ordinance like this. You know, we didn't create it until 2018. This was not something that, that was dealt with, with the police department on a regular basis before. And so, you know, I think there's, you know, your hope is, is that you go in and you create these things and that people are going to start to respond to it. And, you know, you, you try to be reasonable with the business to, to, to try to work with them. And I think, especially when you're going into sort of implementing something like this new, you sort of go in with, with, okay, let's assume good intent, best intent. And then you get burned a few times, and you're like, I don't think we can assume that anymore. And so that's where we're sort of saying, okay, we're going to make this ultra-clear about what the requirements are, so that we can sort of start and say, there are expectations that are here. To me, the biggest issue that exists down here, I mean, it, I think it's, you know, it's, I see it when we have people like book for weddings and stuff up at, uh, up at the event center, or if we have bond feels, or if the, if the Cubs have, or, you know, the state tournament down here, and, you know, you want to have a hotel in your community to be able to refer people to. That's bad, but what's worse is the atmosphere that's been created around the residential units that are around these, these hotels. To me, that is, that has become a real issue that we hear from neighbors down in the, in those areas that, that are just like, this is getting ridiculous. And, you know, we all want a hotel, but at the end of the day, the people who live around that are the ones that are really having to suffer through this. And to me, that's why it's so critical that we just continue to take these steps.
And businesses, right? And then that's the other, that's the third piece, it's, the businesses are there, and, um-
Yeah, one is right there.
Right there. And, but even, but even if you, you know, look at the level two, that's right at a, a business center too, right? You know, especially an area that we've done a lot to make sure that continues to be a certain business in that area, because we think it's important. So, I, I, I agree, I think that is, is key, right? Is people who live there, people who shop there, people who own their businesses there. I'm hopeful that, you know, those people who see this take it serious and understand, like, hey, we're making, taking the appropriate actions to, you know, lack of a better word, protecting and, you know, keep the integrity of the space, I'll call it that way. You know, I, I, it's never good when you see no progress being made at all, let alone worsening, right? That'll be my, my statement of the night. Doesn't mean it can't be turned around, but, you know, that's, that's the thing that's, you know, it's not great, you know, it sounds like the level two stayed the same. I mean, I'd like to see that not, you know, go to level one or, you know, that piece, but to, to continue to kind of progress through, even though we've had these conversations, is, is concerning. And, um, you know, I support continuing to kind of do what we need to do and hope, you know, I will be a glass-half-full person to the end of my life, and I will hope that come August 1st, we'll have a better situation, but we have the places and processes in place if that's not the case.
We talk about management, but is ownership involved in this?
That's was my question.
Who's the owner, and are they part of these conversations? Because is that part of the ma, is, is that management that's living there? Is that owners?
So, management is onsite.
Which one, Town Square?
At Town Square for sure, and I, possibly at Super eight, don't quote me on management onsite. But Mr. Mayor, I have not had personal dialogue with ownership of either property. I mean, I could tell you who the owner of record is based on, on city records. I don't have it in front of me, but our letters were sent to the owner of record, and then those must have been forwarded to management, because that's who ultimately contacted me to set up.
Nate and I have met with ownership before.
It can't go back to square one.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I, yeah, that's what I don't want to say. Well, we didn't know.
Yeah.
You know, you would have came to us.
Yeah. And they're supposed to be doing background checks on owners also. So we should be collecting those owner background checks to make sure the owners are checking out.
So, we talked about the impact to residents, and this is part of how a lot of this stuff kind of, you know, came to the surface too, as the initial resident complaints. So are we tracking calls in the surrounding vicinity of those properties? Because, you know, this goes back to the, the concern that what's the impact to the overall community? And, you know, in my mind, as we kind of think, as, as we kind of go through this, I'm wondering to what extent, maybe in the future, if we, you know, looked at this ordinance, you know, should that also expand calls to surrounding areas? Because, I mean, if someone's, you know, causing trouble, it's just, fine, I can't cause trouble there, but I'll just go down the street or hang out at the park or in front of someone's driveway, right? You know, and that's the concern, that, you know, we might fix the problem on the immediate property, we're just pushing it onto the neighbors.
So, to me, I think that is situational. Certainly when it comes to a qualifying felony, if it's something that is in the adjacent area to the property in question, and we can confirm that the suspect or the individual involved is a, a guest or a resident, if you want to call them that, of the, the property, I would take a look at that. I would take a look at that if that was an appropriate application. However, what I've found in my experience at one of these properties is oftentimes it is a person that we suspect might be affiliated with the particular property, but we can't necessarily prove it one way or the other. And oftentimes it's quality of life issues. So making that nexus to the property sometimes is a pretty loose argument. But that is something that we, that we continually monitor. And again, when I say it's situational, if I think it's something that, that fits as an appropriate, based on that community impact, I think it's important to look at.
Because I've been thinking even like, you know, from like a geographical perspective, I mean, if you did like a map and say it's calls by location and, you know, kind of pin them on a map, so to speak, you know, I, I wouldn't be surprised if like the number of calls and proximity within, let's say a thousand, if your proximity would be significantly higher than in a neighborhood that's, you know, significant, further away or not related to that, right? I mean, that's, that's the type of correlation there that, you know, looking at that from a data perspective.
And if not anything else, even if it doesn't fall under the letter of the ordinance, I mean, I think it becomes anecdotal or supportive when dealing with management that we can say, hey, you're Resident John Doe, this is what he's done within the neighborhood, we have concerns on him. And if we have that good working relationship, usually if they're being a bad neighbor, they're also probably a bad tenant for the hotel.
And I think too, Julie has set up neighborhood watches with some of the surrounding residences as well. I think for sure at Super 8, I don't, we're Sun Lake, that's by Super 8. Yeah, so I know that's happened there too. And I think the downtown businesses also formed like a business watch, like a, like the residents, but for businesses. So Julie's been able to provide resources to kind of see something, say something, and all those types of things too, to, to give also, I think, another connection to what's going on, so.
And I think those, some of those network, the support, you know, networks there will be helpful in terms of identifying, you know, problematic, you know, individuals or, you know, patterns of issues. One other question, so this may be, this isn't necessarily a here and now thing, but this is related to the mayor's comment regarding the staff time that's consumed. And I'm wondering if like, you know, this may be something that's plausible in the future iteration of this ordinance, is that, you know, right now the fees are 300 for level one, 600 for level two, 900 for level three. And for the higher levels, level two and three, because there's significantly more staff time involved, would it be plausible to, you know, increase the fees to be more commensurate with the staff time to effectively cover that cost? Because I mean, that, I mean, effectively, you know, taxpayers are paying for the increased cost because, you know, properties aren't taking care of their business. In fact, you know, my opinion is they should be paying for that, or, you know, or taking the brunt of that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as we work through this progressive process, Chief is going to get some idea of how much time is put into it. And, you know, we want to tie our fees to the effort so that'll allow us to document that.
Right, okay, so that would be, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, because you're, you're right, it's probably a lot more than 900 bucks.
Yeah, sure, it's way more than 900 bucks, but I mean, but that's.
We passed that January 15th.
Yeah, I mean, but I think that it also serves as an incentive too, because if you look at it's a structured structure, it's like, level one, you basically have no issues. It's just administrative fee. If you have some, you need some support, it's like, okay, it's commensurate with the level of support that you're requesting. But then it's like, hey, if you're sucking up a lot of staff time, the rest of the community shouldn't be subsidizing this. I mean, it's, this is like, this is the burden of that property owner to kind of get things in order. And it, but it should be a deterrent to say, I shouldn't need to pay this amount because I should be taking care of business.
I, I will say that, you know, easy term misery loves company, but this has become a much bigger issue for many communities over the last few years as hotels really struggled during the pandemic with filling rooms. And so they came up with alternatives for hotels to fill rooms. And I don't know if you saw, I think it was the city of Savage, I don't know, maybe about two months ago, ended up purchasing that hotel that is down on 13. Because they basically just got to a point where they were just fed up with it and they couldn't get anything to change. And they're like, but we're just going to buy it then. And I'm not suggesting that's the, but I mean.
They bought it and then they are just, it's just vacant?
Uh, yeah, so they'll, I assume what they're going to do is redevelop down there. But this has been an issue that's popped up in a lot more cities recently. I mean, a hotel that we used to have down here that was in other cities created this exact same issues that they had here. There was one down in Mankato, there was one here, there was, I forget what others, eastern, eastern metropolitan city that had it. So I, you know, it's, it's really unfortunate, but this is, this is something that, that a lot of communities are dealing with right now.
I guess this may be a discussion for another time. But that, that, that's like the big question that looms over my head is in the discussion with the county and our, and future and responsibility of providing a safe space for individuals who need housing and support. I think that's the nail on the head, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's.
Support because right now, the current facilities that they're in don't have the support structure necessary to provide for these individuals that need the support. And I'm, I don't know what needs to be done, but I am available to be an advocate.
It's a real.
To get the ball rolling, to make maybe something happen here.
It's a real issue because when there aren't places to place people with support, they're putting them into places that aren't meant to deal with people who need support. And, and the reason they get into trouble is because they shouldn't be unsupported to begin with.
Well, and that's the thing is I don't, I don't want to lambast or punish or penalize groups for providing vouchers for individuals to have a safe space to, to lay their head to sleep. But I understand that there are percentage of folks that have other issues that are driving, you know, criminal behavior and activity, right? And I want to, you know, you can't, it's hard to designate, you know, the, the here and the now with who, who versus who. But, so I'm grateful for groups that can provide these vouchers, that can provide this sort of space. But it's the larger question at hand is, you know, the hotels are just not set up and the support structure to be able to accommodate this. And we need to have a larger conversation about what can be done, not even just in the city, but as a county. Sorry, this is frankly irritating.
No, it's, it's an absolutely real issue because the, the reality is, is that, I mean, that the hotels have turned to, especially during the pandemic because they didn't have other guests. And now, you know, it becomes a place where people can be. But, I mean, you can imagine the problem even sort of compounds itself of, you know, you know, let's say that a place doesn't have a license to be a hotel. Well, now where do people go? I mean, it's, the, doesn't, the problem doesn't go away.
No, and that's the bigger question at hand.
Yeah.
It's a bigger conversation that just needs to be had.
Yeah.
I think the entities that are sending people there need to follow up and see how they're doing. And maybe they look at the fact that they can go, hmm, this is the right place. But I don't, I don't know how they do that.
But if they pull the voucher, Mayor, where do they go?
No, no, but I'm saying maybe they have to find a different place for them, that they find out that this is only making, compounding the problem.
But like, look around, there's not very many places available. I mean, that's, this is like, that's the big question right now. Like our county needs place to provide, because it's not going to go away. I mean, in a perfect world, the, the problem solved would be that every bed that is available for that resource isn't being used. But that's just not reality right now.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think too, that's a very important piece of this. I think another piece is that word spreads when there's mismanagement of somewhere to stay. People hear that and they know, oh, I can maybe go somewhere in Chaska and I can do whatever I want, I'm not going to get. So I think, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think that is part of it. And I think the other part of it is just, you know, resolving the mismanagement of these to get to a better place so that that's not the word on the street. And then, yeah, that's, but the support is absolutely needed too.
Well, and unfortunately, I mean, we're sort of in a position with cities that we only really can deal with the, you know, the effects of it. You know, not, you know, we, we don't have, we don't have people on staff that are social service experts. We don't have, you know, we don't have people that are trained to even deal with this. The only thing we can deal is deal with the symptoms. And, you know, you know, so I do think that gets at Councilmember Hatfield's, you know, thing about, I do think there's something to be said about if the reputation gets around about a hotel being easier to, to stay at, I think that becomes a problem. But yeah, there's, there's also a bigger issue here that cities are just not equipped to, to deal with.
And I would imagine there's some people on vouchers staying at these places that don't like the problems either and really want a safe place and need a safe place to be. So I think that's the other side of it too, is it's, there's a lot of pieces to this. And I think, I'm glad we're, we're starting here and, you know, thank you for everything you've done too and the rest of staff. But, yeah, I'm glad we're at least starting here, but not to diminish anything Councilmember Howard said, because that's absolutely, wholeheartedly agree with that.
I mean, I agree that there's a significant issue on the supportive systems to, to help people who are in need, who, you know, are in need of housing. So I think there's a core issue, but there's, the interesting challenge with this particular problem is that we've got an issue on both sides. We have an issue which we've, you know, discussed quite a bit about people who need housing. But on the flip side, but we've got this great event center, we have wedding venues, we have a great park. And people come to Chaska as a destination and there's not one of these places or places that most people would want their, their friends and family to stay.
Let's walk by this armed guard there.
As luck would have it, I don't think there's been any places in surrounding communities either that, I mean, we've talked about that too, is that there's issues like this that are popping up in communities around us too. And so, I mean, that's when I say that this is a, this is a bigger problem than just Chaska. It is, it is absolutely a bigger problem than just Chaska.
And I think that one of the things we talked about too is that, you know, we looked at like, you know, like trying to attract like, you know, a, you know, a major hotel chain to open up one, like even a mid-range hotel in our community, right? One of the first things they do is they look at, they open up their map and they look at the hotel listings and say, ah, I see there's two hotels there. Here's a number of rooms. Well, per capita, you have enough rooms, so we're good to go. They don't look at the quality type or anything, who owns them. They just look at just a pure room count and say, well, you're good to go, you have enough rooms, and that's it. Even though there's a reality of like, well, but, you know, it's practically the same thing and not necessarily.
Oak Ridge gone, I'm not sure that we meet that now. Because I don't know how many rooms down on First Street are still considered a room. Because there's a lot of, I, I mean, I heard part of the, some of the floors are, are vacant. So I don't, I wouldn't totally agree with the fact that people look at it and say, we got enough rooms.
I think it's a fair point because I think that that's changed since the last time, you know, there was outreach to those. So there may be some opportunity now since Oak Ridge closed, which is unfortunate in itself, but, you know.
But that's a, that was a, at least 100 rooms. Yeah, then I agree with you that, that was our thing, but I think we're probably lacking hotel rooms now.
Yep. So, I mean, it's definitely a problem on both ends. I mean, it's, so, you know, I think first things first, you got to take care of the problem with what.
We have to deal with in our hands.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, and that's where, like you said, I, I really appreciate what the Chief has done in putting this together. I mean, this is not an easy issue. This is, this is a super complicated issue. It's not easy to deal with. I do think we have made it really clear where we stand now. And, you know, our commitment will be is that we're going to continue to look at these behaviors. And, you know, what are, you know, what's happening? And, you know, we'll, we'll deal with the things that we can deal with. And again, our objective is, you know, to, to be able, that if we do get to a point of not being able to continue this with this, that we have something that we feel confident that it's going to be tough to challenge it.
I think I appreciate all of the work that you and the rest of the, and the rest of the team and staff are putting in this because for the residents of the community, for the businesses, and even the guests, and especially the guests too, because there's a lot of guests who, like, as, you know, Councilmember Hatfield said, it's like, they just want a safe place to stay, right? You know, it's, I mean, everyone deserves a safe place to stay. And I think it's really important to address these issues regardless.
I think one of the things we should put in there is they should be at the council meetings. They should hear what councils say. I mean, that's not fun.
We could send them a tape of this.
Yeah. I mean.
It's not the same. You know.
Like a VHS?
Got a reel to reel running in the back of your room here. But I, I mean, I, they can hear the frustrations on our side as well.
Were they, were the hotel owners or management notified of this meeting today?
Well, that's a good question administratively.
They knew in the renewal packet as to when this was.
Okay.
Yeah, because that, keep in mind that this, besides the fact that we're having problems, it's an annual process that we go through, just like our liquor license. So there's, there's a process that Denise goes through just for the licensing process.
But when you hit the top of the bad scale, you might want to think about coming in.
Yeah.
I mean, I get it if, you know, if I had a one and I had a one again, I don't, I don't. I mean, even, even I think at a two, you should think about coming in and hearing what, what they're saying, but.
I was thinking a three should be required to come because we need to have a, a conversation about this personally.
But on the police department's side, I mean, I'll commit to keeping Matt updated and Elise, you know, what kind of trends we may see, whether they're positive or, or negative. And then, you know, if Matt wants me to provide a subsequent update, I'll certainly do so to the council.
So they, they have, they are already notified that they've moved up to a three then already?
Correct.
Is that after this meeting?
No, they were notified. I think that letter went out in early March, if I remember correctly. And then we had a meeting a couple of weeks later.
So that, yeah, the, the reason this is coming to you now is not because of the level, we already did that, it's because they're up for renewal.
It's the issue of a license with the level three for Town Square.
And so the action is all, it's just the, the codification of the renewal at these levels?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I need a motion in a second then, right?
Yep.
We need a motion in a second on combination renewals.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Juan. I'm just going to say, as much as I don't want to vote in favor of this, I know we have to continue the process because to me, if they hit a three, they should be at least suspended for a little bit. I'd love to know that we need business, but that's me, so. Right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are at nine bills.
All right, I have three questions. I'll keep them short. Page eight, there's an item for Imperial Bag and Paper Company for carpet cleaners and floor sweepers. The carpet cleaner is $14,000, so is this, I'm assuming that it's a piece of equipment, not $14,000 of liquid carpet cleaner?
I'm assuming that. I'd have to check into that. What page was that on?
That's page eight.
I'm sure that we got building maintenance now, that we're probably doing more of that, like the stuff that.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things. Page 12, there's Jabil, J-A-B-I-L. There's an item for a remittance for a MIF grant to Jab something, so I'm not sure what that is.
I can speak to that. That was a MIF award that Minnesota Investment Fund that was given to Jabil to expand their business here in Chaska. That was 2018, 2019. It took a while. They received an extension. We were finally able to get the paperwork to pay them.
Very cool, okay.
Where's Jabil?
In the North Industrial Park.
Okay, what do they do?
Custom added and manufacturing injection molding.
I bet you could Google it.
Yeah, I'm, it's a, yeah, electronic manufacturing company.
They manufacture. Okay, last question. So there's an item for MTI Distributing on page 17. And there was a number 560 Sand Pro with trade something.
Yep, so Sand Pro is actually a piece of equipment out at the Town Court, so that would have been part of our, uh, MTI is the Toro dealer. And so that, that would have been part of our equipment replacement this year.
Okay, cool, that's all you got?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll find out on that cleaning.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Motion pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, discussion. Elise?
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Yes.
Yerwin Shittle?
Yes. All right, other business, Councilmember Gra.
Uh, not too much, I just, two quick questions, or one question and one observation. My observation is I like the proposed development side. I saw one in the wild out there, uh, for the first time, uh, at our water treatment plant. So we, hey, we talked about that, it looked nice, I like that. So I don't know if we've gotten feedback or.
We've actually had people say they look nice.
Good.
I saw them, they have a site.
Yeah, I saw one in the wild, I was like, there it is. There's one, so.
Yeah, there's a number of them.
Yeah.
People have noticed them too. That's, I, I've had people say that they've noticed them.
That's really good.
Yeah.
Good, so I, I, I like that work, it's good to see a vision and conversation come to reality there. Um, just a question, we talked several months ago regarding AEDs at, uh, baseball fields in the city of Chaska, and we are vastly approaching baseball season. So I think the conversation that I had was really just looking at, is there ability to fund or is there ability to put some of those? I understand there's issues with them staying out over winter and cold, but, um, just the reality had to do with the Demel, I can't remember his name, the Buffalo Bills player.
Demar Hamlin?
Yeah, Demar Hamlin. So the conversation being that really that baseball and softball tend to be sports at a higher level of that situation, so I was just curious if we looked into that, I know we had questions about.
Yeah, we actually just, and we're going to have them come in at some point, actually just got a grant for a bunch of AEDs. And so we actually are, uh, I know, uh, I think it was Chief that told me that he was looking to, to see if there were places that we could use the other ones.
They're not good in the heat either. So, and I don't know where you'd put them, I don't know where you'd.
Probably in the concession stand.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Yeah, but they're not open.
Uh, for a lot of the Little League games, they are.
Yeah, I mean, like, yeah, I'm a small microchasm of this, but like, there is a push for like, even, even like community ball to sell concessions, because you keep in mind that that front is a fundraiser opportunity, it's volunteer time. So typically they, they are open, from what I've seen.
They're open to do that, but there, there is required maintenance that they have to be looked at. I mean, actually from, from my day, I've been out for a while, you had to look at them daily, the ones we had, to make sure that they were operational. Now, what that's going to mean in a concession stand, I don't know. I mean, that would have to be something, fire is going to have to probably be.
Yeah, I can't, I'm not pretending I'm the expert and maybe it's not feasible. I just think it's, it is something that potentially, I mean, I just look at it like I talked about then and said, you know, you walk into a high school gym, now granted, different controlled conditions, I get that. And they're always there, um, malls, you know, all those places, and then areas where situations could occur to a different level on the baseball field. Um, do we have that like at the high, like, uh, high school football stadium? No, that wouldn't be our situation.
It's not, it's not, but the fire department is generally at football games, so they have them. It's, uh, because there would be, again, the climate, cold and warm do affect it.
Yeah, so I just bring that up because I was just curious, because it's.
I mean, it's about, it's a good question to have a conversation around.
Yeah.
And just, so you know, there has been some, you know, some requests by different, um, athletic groups asking for that. There's been some internal conversations, nothing's been resolved, so there is, the discussions.
Yeah, clearly realize that it is a different climate situation and application. But I still think it's just least worth a conversation to see what those barriers are and can they be overcome? And kind of go from there. So, I think, like I said, again, I won't pretend I'm an expert. I'll, you know, clearly respect the mayor's experience with them and, and understand that, but again, just it's worth the conversation. I guess lastly, I'll just kind of convers, you know, I was sharing personally with Matt here that, uh, I am a person who's impacted by commute wise with road conditions and just, you just adapt, right? Like, I kind of talked about how I've now got this new routine of how I go and how my drive. Self-confess that early on in the process, I got to Cooper's and went, oh yeah, that's right, I can't do this. But it is, it's, it's, it's a change cycle, right? So I know, um, there'll be another change coming here soon. Uh, and understand and, and know that one will be impactful as well. So just encouraging people to follow the signage, do, you know, if it's not a through fare for local businesses or local people, respect that and, you know, you know, use the, the detours as appropriate. If I can do it, everyone can do it, like I said, it's.
We've, we've had some conversations after some social media posts over the weekend, and we're going to start looking at some things and actually do drives, video drives, and say, hey, it's not that hard.
That, I said that to the Downtown Business Alliance, I'm also going to be doing walkings. I'm going to have a whole update for you guys on that.
You TikToking it?
All right.
I have, absolutely.
I have to see it, because I don't, I don't want to get the TikTok.
Even.
We're going to be the dynamic duo.
Yeah, so you know, but that's, and, and really, I like, I, I liked what I saw what McDonald's put out. They embrace the construction, and I'm hoping that more of our businesses embrace that and use that to encourage people to come down. And I, when I, the last place that I expected to see it was McDonald's. And it turns out it was the first place. And they, basically they're just saying, hey, we're open through the construction, we're giving you options, you get a buy one, get one, I don't, I don't even know what they all were. But the fact that I was, I, I thought, wow, there, now that's, we need, we're trying to do everything we can do, but there's got to be some more buy-in from the businesses as well. So I'm hoping that people see that and start utilizing that, because I thought, I thought that that was pretty cool. So, kudos to McDonald's, so.
So I did think of one more, and I'll take my opportunity since you haven't taken it away from me yet. Any flood, Chaska River situation, how is, how's, I mean, I just, it's every one of them.
We're going to be fine here. Yep. Athletic Park, they're actually already using, which is amazing, because.
I did notice that.
Like, one week before, well, one week before they used it, there was still snow on the field and, like, that Monday, it was like as hard as rock, so it was like, so it, it actually.
It's amazing how, you don't realize how much of a drought there was till you saw the snow go directly in the ground, didn't run out.
Yeah, usually we have soggy spots.
And then, two days later, it's like, hey, ours is a rock.
Okay, I was, that's good, I mean, that's good, right? I think, um, I do mean, I drove over the bridge and it's out of its banks.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely higher, but it's, we're not going to have any issues here.
Good to know.
Yep.
Now I'm done.
Based on your athletic, what's going to, the snow pile's still pretty good down there, and if we put, it's pretty clean up, how's, that could all work.
Just mix it in with the snow.
It'll work out.
I'll just tell people, when they ask me, it'll work, don't worry.
Don't worry.
Just put a, just put a shopping cart from Cooper's up there and call it Mount Cooper. Pretty good activity, right?
All right, Mr. Wong.
No, it's going to be more Chaska.
So, um, let's see, so this Thursday is a food distribution over at the former Gedney Pickle site over off of Stoughton. Uh, I think it's eleven thirty is usually when they start. Then April twenty-sixth at the Chaska Event Center between ten thirty and one, Southwest Metro Chambers hosting the first responders luncheon. So that's something, it's to celebrate the first responders. May sixth is Christmas in May, so I think, you know, there's going to be a lot of activity going on. I think that this year we're starting at Saint, uh, at Saint John's instead of Guardian Angels, which is, be cool.
And Five Houses this year, so.
Five Houses, that's a lot, so, yeah, very cool. Um, May tenth, Fireman's Park from four to eight is Taste of Chaska. So, uh, local vendors and music provided by Howes Butchard and Scott Band. July fourteenth to fifteenth, Fireman's Parks Fire and Ice, and July twenty-eighth through thirtieth is River City Days. So lots of stuff coming up in the calendar, we're sort of seeing the glimmers of, you know, summer kind of approaching every, in between our falls of snow, so.
I thought today was pretty nice.
Today was nice, but then the tomorrow, what?
Tomorrow's going to be nice.
Tomorrow will be nice, Wednesday is going to be down again.
Wednesday, Thursday.
We just keep saying it's going to be nice, it might happen.
Hoping. So, um, and then, um, just a quick update on Southwest Transit. So we have a new interim CEO, thought it's worth mentioning. So, um, Matt Faiton actually took a different position at another transit agency. And so Maria Mencia Diaz, who's the chief administrative officer, stepped up to be the interim CEO of Southwest Transit for the time being. And I know, do you want to talk about search at all, or?
I can, yeah, right now.
Well, you can if you want, so we'll talk about it.
So, yeah, continued CEO of search. Right now, we've narrowed it down from, I think it was eighteen or sixteen, sixteen candidates down to, I believe it went down to eight, and now we are down to six, um, which will be in the semifinal interviews. And then, um, the search committee, which is myself, PG Narayan from Eden Prairie, and Jerry McDonald from Chan Hassen, uh, will narrow it down even further. And the commission will, um, vote, and hopefully it will stick. And we will have a new CEO in May is kind of the goal. We've done this very fast, this most recent search, um, and we have some good candidates. So, uh, yeah, hopefully in May, we're, we can talk about who the new CEO is.
Very cool.
But Maria's going to do a fantastic job interim, um, super smart and will get us through with the fair and things like that. And, um, I'm excited with where the organization's going to go next, so.
And we still have some big stuff to sort out, because, you know, the contract with First Transit, the driver's contract, the driver's, um, organization is ending, and, you know, they're probably not going to, um, renew at the favorable rates, the favorable contract that we have now, so we have to make some decisions about that in the next year or so. So there's going to be some, could be some big changes, so.
Basically, we're very busy.
Yeah, so there's going to be a lot of stuff going on for the new CEO and Maria and the whole team there, but they're doing a great job.
Candidates good, I mean, you got some worthy candidates?
I think so, yeah. I mean, the fact that we went from eight to six, and didn't eliminate more.
You got to get that new one in there and get moving forward, that's been a tough battle for.
Reach it to the choir.
Well, we tried.
I know, I know, but I just, that's a tough battle you guys have.
We are working fast though, like, we, it was a couple nights last week, I'm spending a couple nights at the garage this week. It'll be a couple nights at the garage next week, so it is, uh, moving fast.
Yeah, I appreciate all your efforts on that, because, you know, yeah, we've been doing, we've been tag teaming on this, so. You know, I very much can tell you that it's an incredibly time-consuming and exhausting process, because there's a lot of effort that goes into it, so thank you, Michaela, for all your work on that. So, um, and the last question, um, so I know Matt and Elise, did you, either one of you want to, were either one of you planning on talking about Forty-One for an update at all?
Yeah, um, so, uh, you, you, the update now is that, and we, we've been out, the, the signs went up this weekend, is that, uh, so Forty-One, they're going to turn the corner between Sixty-One and, uh, Fifth Street is going to be sort of that, is it Four?
Four.
Fourth, Fourth Street is going to be the first, uh, section that's, uh, closing up on the twenty-fourth. Then on May first, you're going to see the rest of the, the road shut down down to the bridge. And so that bridge section where it's going to be on, on, on First Street, that's going to be closed for, uh, up until right around July fourth, uh, when that's going to be closed. And then that will open up, which will allow traffic to come from the south and be able to use the detours that go on Walnut and Pine Streets. So that's sort of the, the major stuff that's going to be, uh, going on now, so they're really going to start digging into this. The other thing, maybe more from a communication standpoint, I know the mayor mentioned, uh, I know you made a, uh, video tonight that's going to be going out and, and, uh, doing your drive, and it sounds like we'll have a walk, uh, going out. We are meeting with the Downtown Business Alliance to, uh, to talk about how we coordinate those communication messages with the, with the other businesses in downtown too, so that, uh, we can, you know, all be out sort of talking about, you know, what are the things that can, you know, how do we make sure people know how to get around downtown, encourage people to come downtown, continue to get out the vision of what this is going to be, uh, at the, at the end? And, uh, and, and just do that on a regular cadence as, as we move forward on a, on a weekly basis. So now that we're here, that's, that's going to be sort of the thing that, you know, now just get that regular cadence out to the, the public. You know, up to this point, you know, it's been a lot of communications with the businesses, but, you know, people don't tend to pay attention until the road pull signs go up as far as the public around, to your point. And, uh, so now it's going to be, you know, getting more of that message out to the public and encouraging them to come down here.
And do we want to talk about the, um, the construction closures of IPV and the, the resurfacing?
Yeah, so we got informed today when we met with MINDOT that the, uh, resurfacing, uh, project, they had to make a change in what they went out for bids, so they're actually going to be starting that on June twelfth. And they anticipate that that's going to go through to about Labor Day, uh, when they're going to do the resurfacing. We'll actually likely get our roundabout done before they're done with resurfacing.
It's going to take them that long to do that little stretch?
I guess.
It's about three mile, two, was it two and a half miles, I think?
No.
From, from PV all the way up to Eighty-Second Street.
No, they're, they're going from a little bit even farther south than that, up to Highway five.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah?
Yeah, so the roundabout itself, uh, is going to start probably about two weeks or so before, um, we were.
They said like May twenty-something?
Yeah, we were trying to start them both at the same time, uh, but their bidding got delayed, and so that's why they're not starting until June twelfth. But we're going to be in that May twentieth timeframe that we start the, the roundabout. And the roundabout should be, uh, completed by right around the middle of August. So probably based on what MINDOT told us, a couple of weeks before their resurfacing, uh, project is, is done. So everything by about that Labor Day.
Isn't the roundabout then going to resurface from the roundabout to the bridge, wasn't that part of the project?
Yep.
So they're only doing the PV, or thereabouts, not even.
No, that's a good point, is that, yeah, the project's going to take.
That's what I mean, they don't have that much.
The project's going to take care of the stuff that our project is going to take care of.
The eighteen roundabout is out, so they're not doing that. They're only doing straight stretches of a single lane highway, and it's going to take them all summer?
Yeah.
Yikes.
Seems like a lot to me too, but that's what they told us today.
And then, um, was it, yeah, but, and then there's going to be a closure during that time they're working the roundabout, is my understanding too, right?
Well, they'll be, yeah, the closure is going to be during that, uh, during that whole time period that they're actually resurfacing that road.
Yeah.
So basically during the whole summer months.
Yeah, so.
And we've been, I, I know, uh, these guys along with the consultants have been in contact with the businesses up there talking about it. So it's a little bit easier for a lot of the businesses up there for the most part, especially because the county got Lyman done, uh, before, and they can access two twelve, uh, on Lyman, just going over to interchange there.
Which is good.
So, I, when we first talked about the staging, in some of the meetings I've been, I thought we were going to do Sixty-One, and then I thought we were going to do First Street, which is kind of where we're going.
Yeah.
But then what about the north part up to Wall and Court? I thought that was the first phases, we were going to finish them and then close the middles so you can maneuver.
The latest stuff that we got out is consistent with what's being done now, and I can't remember when that went out, um.
It's been out for quite a while. I think kind of August timeframe is when we've started kind of talking about some of that.
When is that part going to happen?
That, that happens at the same time, May first. All Forty-One will shut down from Walnut to the bridge.
So they are going to be working on both sides?
Yep.
I didn't think they were coming in the middle until they had both ends done.
Well, they have, their work in the middle is going to take a lot longer than the stuff on the outsides. That's where, that's where.
Well, no, I, and I realize that, but I, I thought they were going to get that done so that there's easier movement. So you'll be able to take Sixty-One through Forty-One then, that'll be open?
Here, look, Kevin gave us a really good map of the stages of closures.
In July, when they're done with that, kind of that stage three, that's on the right-hand side there, then the intersection will open up and you'll be able to make essentially a three-way movement. You won't be able to go south on Forty-One, but you'll be able to go through.
And then lastly, while we're on this. And then, lastly, while we're on this, have you looked at the big orange signs out of town? It says Walnut closed to the Minnesota River, when they say the forty-one closure.
I, I saw that, and it was confusing to me, too. I assume what they're trying to communicate is because of sixty-one. It, I found it confusing, too.
But it says Highway forty-one closed Walnut Street to the river.
Unless it's talking about the other, the recycling plant intersection.
No, they're, they're talking, what they're talking about is they're talking about that one stretch, that one block of sixty-one, and then going down forty-one. I agree, it's, it's somewhat confusing.
It's not, I don't know, to me, it wasn't clear.
Okay.
And I've seen it in two different places, so it's somewhere coming, I can't remember which one they are now, but, but anyways.
Okay.
All right, you're, you're still back on.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that, you know, it'd be, it'd be helpful, it's like throughout the summer, for us to get the updates, and kind of as things change and evolve, and, you know, because one of the other things, too, is that, you know, because we know that, especially under downtown, there's a possibility we're gonna hit archaeological stuff that may cause delays, or like, you know, may opportunities with weather and stuff like that. So, I think, you know, having that insight or having updates will be helpful for us, as I'm sure we'll probably get questions and from residents throughout the summer, so. Yeah, so, thank you.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Uh, tomorrow's Tax Day. I know everyone loves to talk about it, but for those that have avoided it or have to pay in.
They gave us all the way to the eighteen?
Yeah.
And it was also indigenous, it was a holiday of some sort, yeah.
Tax holiday.
Unless you're in a federal disaster area, then it's, they give you six months more.
Amazing.
Some days, I feel like it.
But no, I mean, that's worth mentioning. We have a community center task force meeting tomorrow. John, I don't know if you mentioned that, I'm sorry.
I did not, nope, that's good.
I've been known to reiterate things during this time. But yeah, so that's tomorrow. It should be a great meeting. We're really kind of, I think, finalizing kind of things up and looking over the building plans, talking about the cost, talking about parking options.
Yep.
And those sort of details.
Yeah, and really, what the hope is from tomorrow's meeting is that we get it to a point where the task force is saying, yeah, we, we think this is conceptually the direction we wanna go, because then, we'll take it out to an open house with the public to, to basically, you know, say, you know, here's what the task force has come up with, all the details of it, here's what they're recommending. Be able to get that feedback back, so that the task force can have one more meeting to incorporate any of that feedback into the plans before then it would go through a formal process with the park board and with the city council.
Yes, so, that's happening tomorrow. There's an Earth Day celebration from, oh, oh my gosh.
Here.
Thank you. I was like, I wrote everything else down, but the date, it's on Saturday, April twenty-second, from eleven AM to two PM. It's at McKnight. It's free, it's family-friendly, it's in partnership with Carver County. There's a interactive hike, there's food, there's activities. It sounds like a great family event. So, be sure to bring your, bring your family. And then, I mean, it's been mentioned, but I, you know, just to, just to, just to call out to, to the community just to continue to shop downtown and patronize these businesses. I know the impact on the businesses, and I know the, the scariness of the disruption of, of the unknown, right? Of, you know, and trying to, to do everything you can as a business owner to pivot that and, and to have the, you know, costs involved with your billing overhead, your responsibilities to your employees and your own household. And I, and I can empathize with that, and, but, just, you know, the public can, you know, asking them to, to continue to patronize these businesses, and we'll all see this through together.
Exactly, good point. You good?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's just a, no, 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 no more.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep talking about forty-one for a second in downtown. I do, you know, I saw social media posts this weekend, like many of us, concerned about the rhetoric, you know, that the city doesn't care about the businesses downtown. My concern is that I would hate for someone to look at that and be like, well, then, why should I? So, I wanna say very much care about the downtown businesses, and you should, too, and you should be shopping and eating and getting chiropractic or haircuts downtown, massages, get your wine and rum, I don't know why it's rum, but, downtown. And that, that is still very important. But along with that, I would like to take a minute to just talk about kind of how we got here. We've talked a little bit about what is coming and kind of what we're gonna do through it. But getting to be on the Downtown Business Alliance is the liaison from the council. I've got to spend the last, like, two years almost talking about this project through downtown and kind of seeing how the businesses have been able to be involved. Some definitely more than others, where, you know, attendance-wise, things like that. But just so that you're all aware on what's been done, and hopefully, the public, too, is, you know, there's monthly meetings for the Downtown Business Alliance, there's also occasionally quarterly meetings. I believe the first meeting on this project, the quarterly one, was July twenty-twenty-one, so that's how far back we go of, like, the businesses being kind of involved and aware of what was coming. So, that's one way the businesses have been involved in the strategy, along with the city. And then, also, I don't know if you guys remember, we had kind of two options to do this road. You know, closing forty-one the whole time along with the bridge, or closing the bridge for a much shorter period, but then, opening it up down Pine and Walnut, that's slightly more expensive, some impact on the residents. But ultimately, the businesses got to have some say in that. We had a meeting with the businesses at the Downtown Business Alliance meeting, where, you know, they were able to kind of express what was, what they felt was gonna help keep them afloat in this time. And they, they were the ones that really advocated for that second option of closing the bridge for a short period of time, and then reopening it to kind of balance the impact between residents and businesses. But also, they felt that that was the best way to keep them afloat. They didn't all agree. They did eventually come together and agree on one option, but it was a really good conversation, a well-thought-out conversation from those businesses. Now, again, there's a small group of businesses that actually attended the meeting versus the whole kind of, like, we see sometimes with housing developments or things, until it's actually happening, sometimes people don't show up. I will say they are showing up now, but they were given that option. I think that was one big thing where I, I thought it was really meaningful that the businesses got to have kind of a part and a say in saying, this is how we think we can stay afloat in this, and then, that was, that was, that's what we did. I believe it was a slightly more expensive option, too, so that reinvestment in our businesses to kind of help them was big. You know, there was a road construction survey, they can still take that survey, I believe, that kind of, for the project team to kind of understand, when does your deliveries come, when are, when's your trash pickup, so we can help coordinate along the way. You know, Greg from Bolton Mink, along with Elise, visiting businesses on a really regular cadence, too. I think sometimes weekly Greg was going to the, a lot of these businesses, or as often as they requested, to make sure they had kind of what they needed, they got their questions answered, things like that. I know that even, I believe, even spent personal time from staff to help businesses with things they needed. So, that was a part of it. They, some of the things they have available to them. And I should also say Nicole from Bolton Mink, and then Bob, the, his title is a project engineer, have attended those meetings to answer questions for months and months, and probably at least a year now, maybe longer. So, having a lot of availability to get questions answered in these meetings. They've also had some access, there's been a website that's been available, a designated phone number for questions or concerns, which has been really helpful. You know, a construction worker is parked in my parking spots that I need for my business, they can call. And it's certainly not a nine-one-one, but I think Bolton Mink or the city has responded fairly quickly to those requests. They've had some access to Lee Hall from Next Stage Minnesota for free business planning and resources. And then, some things they're currently doing right now, as an update, are farmer's, farmer's market booth space, which I talked about last time. They can sign up to have a space, free space at the farmer's market to, you know, move their business into the ton for that, and that traffic that comes through and gets to see their business. So, that's nice, it's free for them. There's the Chaska Herald Monthly Mailer, which I have right here, that they can add details to. So, Dolce Vita and Be Well Massage and Shop Five-O-One took advantage of that to put their businesses on here with what they have going on, or even simply their hours, along with How to Get Around Town, which is a nice map. This comes out in the Herald the second Thursday of the month, and they can put any information they want on here. It has QR codes to all the forty-one projects to downtown Chaska, tons of road resource information. Cubby, who's our kind of mascot through this, hashtag Chaska charm, carm, Chaska charm. And then, like, How to Get Around Town, where's the public parking? This is available online, or if you get the Herald, which you can get for free if you sign up. And then, on the back, there's kind of a fun coloring sheet for kids, and they can win prizes. So, I've already seen a couple of these on their Facebook, and they're super cute. You can win prizes from the downtown Chaska business, so those will be in the Herald month, or, yeah, monthly, and businesses can utilize that. Business sign, signage survey, they've had some, expanded the ordinance to have sandwich signs along Pine and Walnut, giving them access to get sandwich board signs if they need it. And then, also, just the monthly meetings. I've been attending those, I think, from the start. I've only probably missed a handful of them. So, they have access to city staff, and then, me as council as well in those meetings. And I think, like I said, they weren't always super well-attended, they certainly are now, but those are where some of the best conversations have come from, and where they've been able to express concerns, and, you know, just get it all out, and I hope they feel heard in those. But that's kind of, I wanted to share, you know, what's currently happening, what has happened in the past to kind of arrive at this point. And I think the city's been very involved. And that's kind of the special thing about the Special Services District and the Downtown Business Alliance, is that they exist to really, for times like this, when it's hard and it's, you know, impactful, that we can easily come alongside them, where there's that already, that collaboration, there's already an email list that exists, there's already, they know each other, things like that. So, it's, it's really special, I think, what we have in that, and how we've been able to leverage that through what is a difficult time for the businesses. So, there's, the monthly meetings continue to happen here in the chamber. The May monthly meeting will be Friday, the ninth, from seven-thirty AM to nine AM. So, if you wanna see me slowly get caffeinated over an hour and a half, that's always a fun time, but that, those will be ongoing. And I hope businesses keep coming to those and expressing concerns, and to kind of share with you guys what some of those concerns right now are, have centered around parking, so you can kind of see on those images, the dotted lines represent where there's not, there'll be no parking. So, there are some concerns around that, taking a conservative approach to make sure things are safe, and then, keep listening to the businesses to make, to make sure that there's public park, there's public parking available, but to also just kind of reassess, you know, if it's seemingly safe. I think Matt even mentioned it, one of the, your offices look right down on some of that area, to be able to see what's going on. So, that's a lot of the current concern, is just really parking, making sure people get, know where to go. Signage around businesses still, business access. So, those are the current concerns from the businesses that have been attending these meetings. So, I wanted to let you guys in on what that has been, so you're aware as well. Yeah, any questions?
Yeah, we just had communication go out on, to our employees, on parking to move over into the residential areas.
As has the library, I think they've been asking their employees to go further, too.
So, we're sort of hoping that, that other businesses through the downtown do that, too, to really reserve the spots for the patrons that are coming, and so, you know, we're, we're doing that here, moving on to resident streets, the libraries. So, we're gonna be starting that with the road, I think, next Monday.
Next week.
Yeah, next Monday, so.
You had that conversation with the county about parking, too. Did you get anywhere at that license center?
Yes, we've had several conversations with the license center, kind of along the same lines, asking their employees, many of them who park in the lot, to park further out in the residential areas, leaving the lot for their customers rather than parking on Pine Street itself. So, they are aware of the closures, and also utilizing the stalls that are on Fifth Street that are signed for other uses.
Are we gonna bag those signs, then?
We're going to be doing something if they don't do it.
And thank you, Michaela, I was gonna say thank you, Michaela, for covering, like, a huge, there's a huge amount of stuff that's going on.
And just because it's not on Facebook doesn't mean it's not happening.
Right.
Well, and also, the one other one, did you, and apologies if I missed.
No, I probably did miss something there. It's been a long several years.
And well, there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of stuff. And one of the other things, because you talk about downtown businesses, is also there's a grant program for renovation of the back entrances, which is gonna be important, not just for now, but also in the future, too. So, that's something that the city's also offering for these downtown businesses in support.
Can we elaborate on the details of that? Is it just like a certain amount of money that's awarded to each of those?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't brought back the details to you yet, because we don't have them completely done yet.
That's my plan is next meeting.
You know, every business is different, okay.
Next meeting, you will see those.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be bringing that back, but it, it sort of stems from, you know, we had the analysis done of each of the buildings to say, how can you best reconfigure that? And then, there's gonna be recommendations on how we can financially support that, 'cause you're right, every business is gonna be a little bit different. But how, you know, a lot tends to, like, our storefront programs, it's based on, you know, a percentage of the project, you know, something like that to, you know, in, instead of a fixed dollar amount for every person.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I just was curious, 'cause it was like, I know this is a resource, and it's available, or will be.
It will be available.
But I don't know what it's gonna look like, and I don't know.
Well, you will next time.
Yeah, well, that's great. One thing I'll mention, a comment and then a question, comment. The cool thing is, I, I don't know, I signed up to get the emails, and so, the cool thing is, I've been getting the emails from the Downtown Business Alliance, but that the meetings are posted on, like, YouTube, so you can watch.
Yes, they're recorded.
Their meetings, which is great. I mean, I, I watched the last couple. And then, my question then in that is that, as a non-participant, right, going back and viewing it later, do we have a sign-in, like, of the businesses that are, like, online and in-person? Like, so, like, as a council member, I can just, like, see, like, who, who is coming to these meetings as businesses? Just like, general knowledge, right?
Yeah, they, they.
I mean, they're not required, but.
Yeah, the Business Alliance, who runs the meetings, do keep track of the folks who are there, so if you're interested.
Yeah, I just was, I'm just curious, like, I mean, I'm not trying to be like, oh, that person is this, and that person's not, but it's just, like, I knew that the last meeting, you can kind of see who's visibly there, but I, I know that there's people online, and maybe just, if they don't, they're not, like, vocal, you can't tell if they're there or not.
Yeah, usually, we do introductions at the beginning of the meeting, but we also take notes as to who's all there.
Sure, and the meeting doesn't always, the meeting didn't start at the very beginning, so I don't really know.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all.
You can ask me, I'll tell you.
Let's run down the roster a little together now.
Oh, and then, two more events. Sorry, is there any more questions on that? Okay, Coffee with a Cop this Thursday at nine AM at Dunn Brothers, and then Squad Car Storytime at the Chaska Library on April twenty-sixth at ten-thirty AM. These are both great events to get to, interface with our local police department. That's it?
Awesome. Thank you, thank you for your work on the Downtown Business Alliance, and I'm sure that they appreciate that. I appreciate the updates, we get them here, and I think it's good that we didn't always have that. And I think it's great that we have that ability to have that now, and have you there representing and being there as often as you are, so that's awesome. Thanks. All right, Elise?
An update?
Nate?
Nothing to add.
Mike?
Nothing to add.
Matt?
No.
I don't really think that I got anything to add myself, so. That, well, other than, I know it's pretty late, nobody's watching anyways, but Christmas in May, if you wanna have a fun Saturday, come and join us. It's, it's an awesome time, you get to meet a ton of people. And to see and, and interact with the people that you're helping is another great experience that you really can't explain unless you really do it yourself. So, if you have the ability, on, on May sixth, meet us. meet us at St. John's at seven o'clock. We're generally out the door before eight. You get to, you actually get to pick your house to where you wanna help, so if you got time, it's a great experience, so I hope you can join us.
And we take anybody from very low skill level to high skill level.
Yep, you don't, like I say, just need, come and we'll either teach you something or you can show us your skills and utilize them in that way, so. Great time, and you'll see all of us there.
No, you won't see me. I'm so sorry. I have a wedding. They happen, weddings happen.
Well, you'll see the, the rest of the good people.
You'll see the good ones.
All right, last call. I don't, I don't think anything else. Last call. Motion to adjourn. You two in with this?
Sorry.
Did you make that motion?
No, I was confessing that it's potential that I may not be there either.
Tell, why does he say it out loud?
Cause I'm trying to, trying to adjust.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post him sign. You adjourn, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.